We have a busy day today because apart from having us very, very special guests, we also have a presentation of a musical group. And I think we'll break for them, I think 11:10 or 11:20 or something like that. Dr. Mackey will be here shortly. But we are so grateful that Representative Anthony Daniels, who for those of you who don't know is a former teacher and a very distinguished and well-respected leader across the state and particularly in my district and in Huntsville. And Mr. Daniels and the Minority Leader is a little bit the way agreed to come as part of our ongoing effort to make the school board more available and increase the communication relationships between us and our legislature. The next month we'll have Representative from the Senate leadership. So, you know, there's nothing that seems to be that I don't read every day and get multiple emails about other than education issues. And we are all constitutional officers and work carefully and enthusiastically with our legislature. So I invited, and we invited Mr. Daniels to come. And basically, his mission is to say what he wants to say. And our mission is to listen and to try to maintain a better relationship or an improved relationship or even continue a great relationship with Mr. Daniels. Mr. Daniels?
Certainly thank you for the invitation to the board and also superintendent and their staff. And all of those that are here today certainly appreciate the opportunity to continue the dialogue that we started approximately a year, a year and a half ago where we visited a little bit to talk about education issues and priorities for the state. I would say that for me, I'll kind of talk about a number of things, but more importantly for me, I do realize the separation in with the board and the legislature. Oftentimes my colleagues don't, but I do. Being a former classroom teacher, and that's one of the reasons I ran for office, is because there are so many voices about education that never stepped in a classroom or served on the school board or been engaged in education in general. And so for me today, it's more about letting you know that I have an ally. And I understand education on a number of levels. Before becoming a classroom teacher, I had some interaction with the state board during the time I was a sophomore at Alabama A&amp;M representing student AEA as their state president, state vice president at the time regarding the practice exam that was thrown on us toward the end of my, the requirement for graduation, three months before graduation. So I lost that fight, but it was a worthy fight.
But I think you passed.
Absolutely.
You didn't lose the fight, you just lost the battle.
Well, my advocacy for all the students throughout the state of Alabama was really what I was doing. But understood the need for an assessment, especially content knowledge to make certain that we're preparing educators to go into classrooms that actually understand the content despite not necessarily being, having any measurements on the pedagogical aspect of it, also the pedagogy, but the content knowledge is something that is extremely important. And so we certainly are moving ahead on that. And I know that you guys have made some changes to that here in the last year. And so certainly looking forward to seeing kind of the results of that. I think for me, those of you that don't know my background, for context purposes, I've taught in three different settings. I've taught third grade at a public magnet school. I've taught fourth grade at a Title I school. And I've taught fourth, fifth grade combo on an Indian reservation. And so, but prior to being in education, I was the chairman of the National Education Association. So I worked on the policy side as the elected leader for AEA prior to going, returning to Huntsville and going into the classroom. And so I look at education a little bit different than most, having more recent experience than most of my colleagues in the House of Representatives. I try to make certain that I shed light on some of my experiences and things that we should consider as we move forward, but also paying attention to the demands, the continued demands on educators that has also driven a lot of exhaustion in the profession because they are serving in a number of capacities. Sometimes they're mom and dad and counselor and everything else as, in addition to being a teacher. And so I certainly realize that. But for us, I do think that we have to get to a point to where we're supporting you and your vision for education in Alabama because you were duly elected to represent the interests of Alabamians on the state board to ensure that Alabama Public Schools have the best quality education possible. I will tell you from a legislative perspective, I've been very concerned about the funding model. I think that anytime that you look at the funding model from whether it's local funding or state funding that's provided in areas that have been historically underperforming, then we know that funding does have impact on that. We've not yet reached the point to where we are, have, from a cradle to pre-K perspective where every community across the state have high-quality early childhood education programs to where they go into kindergarten or pre-K already ready to rock and roll. And they're not at, we're not at that point yet. So oftentimes it's very difficult. And in public education, you can't choose the students that you accept. There is, of course, the infrastructure is in place for all students and especially neighborhood schools and schools that their districts and their residents of. And so I realize that you're operating where you're teaching all kids no matter the level that they come to. And so I think that from the front-end standpoint, we got to do a better job of making certain that we're collaborating with Early Childhood, Secretary of Early Childhood, as well as those with mixed delivery systems, the private daycares, church daycares and all, to start having conversations in these communities where we're trying to build a pipeline so that every child have access and parents understand the importance of having access earlier on because we realize that every dollar that's invested in early childhood saves us seven dollars in corrections. And we're trying to reduce the population in corrections long-term. And in order to do that, we're going to have to address some of these issues on the front end. And so we got to get out of our bubble of operating and saying, hey, this is our job. It's from birth to career, that's our job. And as a state, it's our responsibility to ensure that more students that's coming from Alabama Public Schools are going into higher education in Alabama and that we're retaining them. All the investments that we make in companies and we're going to be dealing with the JOBS Act and growing Alabama, we will like nothing more than to have more students graduate from our institutions, being retained in the state of Alabama. And we also want some of our own to be able to go into careers like education and feel comfortable going to careers like education. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And so one of the things that I think, I certainly like to see from a legislative perspective, more collaborations from the birth to career aspect. So on the front end, I think that, I think that you guys do a phenomenal job from a K-12 standpoint. I do think that we could, we should look at more opportunities for dual enrollment to make certain that students in rural communities have access more to dual enrollment as well as urban and suburban areas so that there's more of an equity across the board for dual enrollment and opportunity. I do think that we got to get more engaged with the business community in these particular areas so that we are continuing the growth in some of the areas. We are experiencing tremendous amount of decline in growth in Alabama and some of our rural communities. And we got to figure out how do we get back to building the infrastructure to where we can have highly qualified teachers that want to go. I know that the math and science incentive caused some problems among the other areas, critical areas like special education, which is a high needs area, and other areas and other educators are very concerned about their pay and having equity across the board. But I know that we're addressing a need that's certainly across the state of Alabama because I could tell you that there are times where, even in my high school, where I had a substitute teacher for several months in math and mathematics. And so how are we to prepare our students at a high level to take ACT or be prepared for the ACT to get interest into college if we're having someone that is severely underqualified teaching a very critical area that builds upon the skills? So the math skills, you just can't skip from one level into the other without having the appropriate foundation to move to the next level. And that's a critical area. And so that's something that I've been concerned about, but it's also all the other areas are as critical as mathematics in our state. And so I do know that there's some conversations right now around growing your own, making investments and working with our high school and down to the middle school students to getting them interested in teaching in the education field. But I do think that we're going to have to remove some of the barriers and stigmas that have been put in place to drive them away from the profession. And so we just got to figure out and think through, think through that process and be very deliberate about that. I will tell you that several months ago, this will be the second time that I've visited the United School, Unified School District in Oakland in California where they have a pathways program. I think we have some semblance of that with the career areas where we have the career centers across the state. I think in Huntsville we have the College Academy and other things that's similar to a pathway program. But we got to look very carefully at pathways. If we're driving students to be interested in especially the professions that we want to retain them in from an economic development standpoint in the state of Alabama, we have to be intentional about the partners. That's why the partners in working with the business community is extremely important so that you're able to, if you had a track that was public health, for example, all aspects of public health, well, you're partnering with hospitals, you're partnering with the policy aspect of it, you're partnering with areas that are in the black belt and areas that have these co-movilities that exist and doing research and really understanding it from holistic standpoint so that a person that goes into public health, public health track will not only write in their English course, they're writing about public health and getting in-depth knowledge, they're also learning about it from a historical standpoint. And then they're doing internships and opportunities with local hospitals and other things. And so there are ways to, to really address recruitment and retention long-term and make, and folks are proud to go back to their hometown. But we have to make certain that we're creating an infrastructure that's sustainable long-term for people to want to go back to their hometown. And so from a legislative standpoint, I do think it's our responsibility from a funding standpoint is to provide the resources and the support necessary to help you accomplish that. The other thing for me is laying out a plan, communicating with the legislature to make certain that there is a plan as to here's how we solve problems in schools that are areas that are underperforming. Here's how we solve the problem and build upon the skills and increase the rigor in places that may be performing at a high level, but we want them to be better. And so that we're, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach to education in which I think we've, we just got to do a little bit more. I was very fortunate and very appreciative that Dr. Mackey and I went to visit Harlem's Children's Zone in New York City. And some of the things that have been implemented in some of the areas within the state of Alabama, I think are positive to get more parents involved. I wish we could do that on a broader scale. I think that that particular model works in some variations of that model, although it was a charter model, works in the public setting. And that's something that we have to kind of be more open-minded about doing things that are, that have already been tested and seeing how we make that work throughout the state of Alabama, but being very deliberate about where we focus our attention. I've always been one of building on the strengths and focusing on weaknesses. We know where the weaknesses are, we know where the threats are. So let's focus on those areas, let's build unlikely partners and allies that we've never had a conversation with. We should not, right now, we're in crisis mode. In North Alabama, Dr. Reynolds could attest to this, we don't have enough people to fill the jobs that we have coming in from a qualified standpoint. And so instead of focusing a lot of our attention on bringing people in from other state, we have to be deliberate about growing our people within the state and building the pipeline within the state of Alabama. And so those are some of the areas. One other area I'll mention, you know, really concerned about, some of the school districts throughout the state of Alabama do not have necessary after-school programs that are more content and data-driven. I was fortunate to speak to a young lady yesterday down in Foley area. And they are, they are fortunate to have access to the resources of the 21st Century Grant where they're doing things with STEM and also focusing on math and reading and other areas. And they're making it very exciting for those students. But not every school district in Alabama have access to that. And so looking at models that work, that's going to do more enrichment to make certain that our students are, are being challenged and they're, we're learning, they're learning, even the after-school programs, using those after-school programs to focus on reading and math so that we're building, we're pulling them up. Not necessarily at a child that, that goes to the third grade but is not prepared, but what are we, what are we doing to really help that child? What are we pulling them out? I know that we did response to intervention when I was teaching, but you know, you didn't have enough personnel to really be consistent with that. Now, there's one lady that I spoke with that talked about a pre-first. And some of the schools in, I think it's in Tennessee where they've done pre-first, students that are not necessarily ready for first grade, but they're working with them in a pre-first to ensure that they're closing any of the gaps that they, that they are able to identify based upon the assessments that they've done so that that child will be able to kind of move on with their colleagues eventually. And so we just got to be more creative and innovative. But for us, I think we're here to support you and your efforts and that's what we want to do. I've been in the classroom, I understand it as far as I've taught, but I know this changed since even I've been in the classroom. And so what I would like to do is, I would like to focus, us to focus our attention on building relationships again on the front end with unlikely allies that we've never worked with and dealing with our, working with our universities because when we're writing, when we're sending funding to our institutions, to higher education, we want Alabamians to be in those schools. And right now, from an academic standpoint, they're not, they're saying that our folks are not at the level that they need to be to be able to get into these state schools. And so we got to change that. And so we're, we're looking for your guidance and expertise on that. I would like to see the day where legislators are not trying to legislate the state board for education. That's what I want to see. And I'm there to kind of push back on some of the things that we've been talking about. I know that school choice has been a very highlights conversation over the past month. But I'm, I have the, I use the analogy that I take Interstate 65. If Interstate 65 have potholes in the road, do we go and build Interstate 64 or do we fix 65? Let's focus on fixing the public school system and improving the public school system, but also congratulating you on the successes and the things that you're doing that are working and not just telling you what you're not doing. And so that's where I, I believe if this fixing and addressing the current system that we have in place and build it upon that, adding more innovation and opportunity so we can move our state forward. So that's, that's all I have today. That's all my mind, it's a little bit of what's on my mind. I want to yield the remainder of my time to my colleague here to, to give his solution to education and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Mr. Daniels, I can't tell you how proud we are. And you talk about an unlikely, unusual partnership. We don't think we're an unusual partnership. And this board, over our development, is more committed to work with the legislature at every point so we do our job and we don't have the legislature feeling that we're leaving a deficiency that you have to fill in. And without any further delay, I'd like to introduce the Majority Leader from Hartsell, another close person of mine. And coincidentally, he's from Hartsell, he is just beginning his second term and was elected by his colleagues as Majority Leader in the house. Scott is a businessperson owning his own business, Hagan Enterprises. And whatever you want to say, Scott.
Awesome. Well, first off, thank y'all for having.
Thank you for coming.
And me and Leader Daniels, I think, you know, when you reached out and gave me the invitation to come, after we got off the phone, I got to thinking about how big of a step this is for the right direction. Because in the past, we really have not been in conversations, you know, with Dr. Mackey. He visited us daily during session, I believe. And we have a good relationship with Dr. Mackey, but I feel like this today is the first step in the right direction. I think, you know, Leader Daniels and I, we work very well together. Both of us are on different side of the aisle and we have different views on some things, but one thing we will agree on is the education system in the state of Alabama is most important. And we will, I mean, I'm going to speak for you, both of us will do anything we can to get us to the level we need to be. Because I think on a national level, you know, we keep saying, you know, we're going to do this, do this and get higher and higher, but yet we're not. And I think drastic measures have to be taken. And it's not every school system in the state of Alabama, as all of y'all know. It's rural communities, it's communities that are suffering and they're suffering in poverty levels. And to me, that's my focus. I want to, I lived in the Black Belt area for a little bit and I've seen those kids grow up and I've seen some of the stuff, the challenges that they're faced with. You know, Hartsell's blessed, you know, Huntsville's blessed in a lot, a lot of areas as well. But we've got areas that we need to focus on and not so much Hoover and the, you know, we know they're doing good. We need to focus on the places that are not. If we were, if these were all corporations and if I was the CEO, I would get a list of the corporations that were not performing at a level, right? And then I would go in and evaluate those corporations and we would do what needs to be done to make them perform at the level they need to perform. That's the approach I take to education. It's more of a business mindset, but I think we need to focus on the schools that are struggling. And there's a lot more to just, you know, not doing well in the classroom to some of these schools. It's their home life. It's some of the stuff that these kids are struggling with before they even step foot in the school. And some stuff we can't legislate, right? Some stuff we have no control over. I'm really big on workforce development. I think any district you drive through in our state and you go by an industry, you're going to see a help wanted sign on the door, right? We have thousands of kids graduating high school every year. That is a perfect opportunity to showcase to these kids, if you learn a trade, if you learn a skill set while you're in school, you can immediately get out of school and start making good money, immediately. I mean, you got kids right now that went in a welding program, it's three or four years after, they're making almost six figures. And you got kids that go to colleges, and I'm fixing to chime in on what Leader Daniels said earlier about that, but you got kids that go to college who have student debt, who are making a fraction of what these kids are making, who, you know, zeroed in on a trade. We need to focus on the future of Alabama. We need to make sure that the kids who invest in our higher ed stay in Alabama after they complete graduation. We've got, we've got some kids that, you know, I'm not going to say names, but we've got a lot of universities that have a higher percentage of out-of-state tuition kids than in-state. That's not investing in our state. That's not taking our state forward because they're, they're using our education and then they go to another state and they're not investing in the state of Alabama. That's my personal focus, I want to say, is workforce development. And then trying to invest in the future of our state with our kids after higher ed, once they enter the workforce. But I think we need to take a drastic approach to the schools that are suffering. And, you know, I think we need to get boots on the ground, we need to take, we need to look at it from a different aspect from what we have been. I think we need to look at all the situations and circumstances of that school and that community. And each decision for each school is going to be different. You can't say this, this is going to fix every school. One school's going to have completely different solutions than the other school because the problems in the community and everything those kids are going through and the administrators and teachers are going through, completely different. So I think we need to evaluate each community separately and move the state forward. I think, you know, on the overall average, we do great. We're doing, we got a great curriculum, we've got, my daughter's in fourth grade right now. So I want to tell you, she is learning stuff that I was learning in high school with anatomy and physiology in fourth grade. So I'm just sitting there thinking, wow. I mean, so that's impressive to me, but I'm still, I'm worried about the kids who are just in a bad situation in our state. I mean, that's, that's my number one focus. But we can fill also the voids that our employers are having too with workforce development. I think that's another, another angle. But anyway, but thank y'all for coming and please, I think both of us are available at any given day you all need us. As you can see, we're here right now.
And we appreciate you being here and we need to let you know that there's a group going to be performing upstairs and we would like you to join it because it would be a great honor for them to see our legislative group. Because McKee Middle School from Montgomery County, we're performing and we'd ask you to join us, then we'll come back because I'm certain some of our members have questions. And we know how valuable your time is and it's part of our relationship building. And we're grateful and we would ask that you please join us, Dr. Mackey.
Yes, sir. So we're going to have a second floor.
Have a brief recess.
It's McKee Middle School flute ensemble and Dr. Chestnut's district and, but I'm sure that there are kids from all over Montgomery County, so some of them might be in Bell's district too. But they are starting right now. So we should probably get on up there and it'll probably be about a 15-minute performance and then we'll come back if that's okay. So everybody in the room is welcome to go, but I'm going to ask you to let board members lead first, please. They'll go up the main elevator, through the stairs.
Absolutely.
And then go.
I'm going to do the floor.
Thank you. I'll get.
And we know school choice is a big deal. And we know there's no legislation on the table. And so board members, do you have any questions or comments to these distinguished gentlemen?
First, I just want to thank them for being here.
Yes.
Because we know we began this process on last year saying we wanted a better relationship. So thank you all for making this come to fruition. I really enjoyed your comments because it helps us to see how you're thinking. However, I had really an extended question for you, Representative Daniels. In reference to, you mentioned a plan that you'd like to see a plan from the State Board. In line with that, what do you envision as a part of a plan or what do you have in mind? Knowing over the years, there have been quote plans, but just what is your vision of that? And I just wanted to get clarity. Because I know we have some things that are being presented and that are out there, but just really just wanted more clarity as to your vision.
I think really focusing more math and reading. You know, we have legislation that passed the last couple of years, Numeracy Act and also Literacy Act. I understand there have been some gains and some improvements from the data perspective. But really seeing a plan, I think one of the things that we're missing the mark on what I'm hearing from a lot of educators, middle school, middle school reading is where that there is a severe disconnect from parental involvement standpoint in middle school as well as the reading aspect. And so that middle school area, really seeing what we can do to really firm up the efficiency there. And then the other thing is a collaborative plan between before they get to pre-K. We know that pre-K right now is not universal in Alabama. So therefore, in some of the critical areas of the state, there are no pre-K programs or there's a waiting list that's probably as much as, you know, 50 to 100 people, especially in these small areas. And so you end up having kids starting kindergarten all on different levels. And so that makes it more difficult for you on the, for the school system. And so I think for us is seeing a plan where there's, because it is shared responsibility with higher ed as well as early childhood. And so just really seeing really a plan and more collaboration from those levels is what I think, and then collaboration with the corporate community. I know that the two-year board is made up of a lot of the folks that are in the industry. And so just having some input and insight from industry on some of the things that you guys are doing, especially in high schools when it comes to the college and career aspect. And just trying to really be more collaborative because at the end of the day, whenever there is a plan and a path and it's more of a collaborative plan and a path, you'll get more buy-in in some of the things that's happening across the street. I think it'll prevent some of those things from happening because of the players that you have at the table with you on the front end. And so just trying to help you understand the political landscape of how to make this work, but also being more, being effective in making it work. But I just, I just think that without a plan, you leave it up to the imagination of legislators to think there is no plan and no path forward.
Tom, do you have a comment about things that you see envision moving forward?
I concur with Leader Daniels on the pre-K program. I think we're still seeing the results of that program. Extremely excited about it, you know, but some of the key areas that we need to emphasize on it, we need to ramp up the program. I think the, of course, I've talked about workforce development. I think y'all are pretty, y'all know I'm sound on that. I think the most difficult part about y'all's job is you don't see results until several years later. And it's difficult to know if you're on the right path or not. So that's the, that's the work part. But I think if we start getting a plan to isolate those areas that we know they're struggling, that's, that's most important to me in the state, I believe.
Well, you know, we, one of the things we've done, of course, is increase some of the requirements for graduation to include more fields, which we think is going to strengthen our outcome in our work and relationship with industry and across the state to be more equitable and being concerned about every area. And we know the legislature is funding us better than we've ever been funded. But we also know, particularly in North Alabama, it's very competitive to employment. And so we're, we all live in that, the three of us live in that environment. Other questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I want to also thank you for being here today. Now, this is something actually that we have done in the past, and it has been very, very successful. I know even during redistricting, the legislative boards would come and meet with board members to work out districts, but we had a great communication. I don't know, it's the access, the, they would come to us and ask for what our opinions individually and collectively as a board. In the past, we had a In the past, we had a level of communications that I have not seen for a while, unfortunately. And so the breakdown, I think, seeing the history, and I've been serving on the board for 28 years. This is my eighth term. And before that, I was a reporter and covered the board. After that, I was a parent, and I was working and created a grassroots education reform group. And so I've seen a lot over the years, as I know you all have, but I'm a bit older, so I've seen a little bit more. But from that standpoint, we actually have had times in the state when we, when education was working, and we saw the results in the test results and other measures that were used. We saw them actually with the support that we had, not only the State Board, but the communities, the schools had among parents and teachers. I'm hearing today, I get calls all the time, and some of them are from outside my district because they think I'm still in the district, since this is my fourth district. But the bottom line is that there are teachers who are leaving the classroom because they're fed up. They're tired of everyone else in the world telling them what they have to do. They don't see the kind of respect that they've seen in the past. They don't have the kind of support that they've had in the past. I know you've been in the classroom as a teacher, and you can understand how important that board is. They're frustrated with the legislature that has always mentioned, and I'll never say anything bad about the state school board, but they're always saying, you know, I wish we could get the legislature to understand what we do. And this is coming from some of the best schools in the state I have in my district. My district goes all the way up to Mountain Brook. But the bottom line is that that's what they're begging for. When I receive a call from parents about something that's happening in their communities, they will tell me specifically what's going on, and they ask for help. And I'm saying, well, you know, 10 years ago, I could have helped you. Five years ago, I could have helped you. But the way that the laws have been changed, I don't have that ability at this point. There are so many barriers, and it's under the guise of local control. But actually, what happens is you, they don't know where to go. They don't know who controls it. And so from the standpoint of what is happening across the street, that connection, that communication that we used to have is crucial in terms of creating an environment where education and teachers are not only supported, but they can thrive. We're looking, you mentioned raising standards, and yet we're looking at changes that may actually lower standards. Teachers are telling me this instead of me telling teachers. As far as dual enrollment, we've had dual enrollment in the rural areas. I was the one who pushed it back in 1995 for academic programs, when this board also had the two-year colleges, and we could partner with those two-year colleges that were in communities. And I know Belinda is aware of the program, but it worked. And we had to actually convince local superintendents that this was a good idea. And once they were on board, they, they understood completely why it was a good idea, but it was new. So there are a lot of things that are being talked about now that were actually created and started with the State Board of Education. So much of what has happened in terms of, I know Dr. Richardson and I have served when we had the two-year colleges, which made it helpful when you talk about preschool and you talk about dual enrollment and you talk about career tech programs. We had the big, the whole picture, and there was a way to make things happen quickly and precisely. And we, if we saw a problem, we could correct it because we had oversight for both entities, for both the K-12 and the state school board. With a lot of the things that have been done, and I, 100%, I was part of the original reading initiative that received so much recognition across the country. The same thing with our original STEM program, AmSti. Those were actually models for other states. And we're going backwards and modeling other states that have actually used our state as a model in the past. But we didn't have the kind of support that we needed in the legislature. When you pass a law, make sure, for example, with our reading books and other tools that teachers use, don't make it so restrictive and prescriptive that we, as a board, cannot approve textbooks or reading, just a basic tool, reading books for the classroom that teachers want. Because of the qual, the things that are prescribed in your legislation, you are restricting it, and we can't approve it. So what has happened, what I have seen happen in the last five to 10 years is where the legislature is trying to do our job to the point where it's harmful, it's not helpful. You may have great intentions, and you were probably not in the legislature during part of that time. But we have to work together, and before you put something in a budget, even that can be a problem. But we can work through that, it's an annual budget. What happens with these laws, so much as you know, better than we do, is so much more difficult to change the law and fix it than it is to actually correct a problem at our level. We can do it as a state school board. There's not a problem with the locals doing what they need to do. They hire and fire teachers, they do what, what they do with personnel and running the show, so to speak. But we need to be able to support them. And some of those laws have actually become a little bit restrictive in trying to do that. And it's, when I say we, I'm talking about not only the state school board, the policies, but the department as a whole. And these calls are from people who will call me because they know that it will be confidential, but they need to talk to someone. And when I say, why don't you call your legislative board, it's always, come on, listen to me. And I have to say, well, I know so-and-so, and he's a great guy. Or she's wonderful, you need to call. I've tried that. And so from that standpoint, keep in mind that we ran for the state school board, just like you did, and somebody, I've heard somebody saying how large our districts are, they are. And when you've had four of them, four different ones, you get to know a lot of people. And a lot of people are kind enough to call and tell you what they think and what, what they would like to recommend. Please keep that in mind. The teacher shortage, to a great extent, is, is really the result of a lot of teachers who are just frustrated, and they're some of our best, who've been in the classroom for a number of years because they are called to be teachers, and they love what they do, but they don't love dealing with everything that they have to deal with. They're not complaining, but they're saying that they cannot teach. And if you want someone to learn to read before they get to middle school, and I said that 20 years ago, probably everybody on this board has said the same thing. We need to let teachers do what they know how to do to do that, and we need to provide them with the tools. But please be mindful of that. And I'm begging you to not only not take more of the authority away from this state school board, but to give it back. And where areas, for example, the charter commission, we don't really appoint those people. And you know that from what the law says. All we do is basically confirm one of the two people named. And that actually, when people think that there's a problem with the charter school, it actually confuses the issue. That's just one prime example. If you want to have the people named in that legislation, the lieutenant governor, the governor, the speaker, let them appoint, and you can let the Senate confirm. But if you really want us to help, give us a bigger role in that other than, because we don't have a role otherwise. The department sort of monitors it, we have someone in our department, it's placed in our department. But as far as being able to tell people there's a school with multiple problems and you need to look at it, that's about all we can do, just like you can. But please, don't take any more of the authority away, give it back. And I say that, I'd say that if I were not on this board, because I've seen it work, and I've seen the frustration, and I've seen our agendas go from, and I think it's wonderful to recognize people, but from actually pushing forth solid policy to basically having to add what you've passed to our administrative code. And I don't always agree with it because I see problems that have happened in the past. But, but that's about all we do these days. And recognize wonderful people who we're so thankful to have in our schools, including students, teachers, counselors today, the career tech group. But please be mindful of how we have a job, just like you do, and let us do that job. Because there are so many problems that have been created, and especially in the last, as I mentioned, five to 10 years. As a result, good things, great things, but also some, some problems that need to be fixed. And that's it. Sorry.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bell. Would you either care to comment? Because I know, one of the things that, when I first came on the board, there was unanimous motion, action by the legislature, or a constitutional amendment to abolish us. And I remember as a newly elected constitutional officer, I came here and said, we were talking about going in the future. I said, we're about to get put out of business. Fortunately enough, the people of Alabama voted to retain this board.
Seventy percent.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six percent.
Sorry, I knew it.
I was trying to be conservative. Yeah, and that's a good.
And I think that's an indication. And we ran for, I ran for reelection. And I have as good a relationship across my district. It's the smallest geographically, but it's still one-eighth of the population, and we consider it. But when you talk about the charter schools, we know the charter school process, and Logan Cersei's here. She's assigned to us, but it's a different group, and they don't get elected. And then we have controversies with, some of them are coming up noncompliant. And the appeals process, if the charter commission does something, the appeals process is right back to the charter commission. The school board doesn't have a role. We at least want the decisions, if the charter commission appeal, decisions appeal, comes back to us. Because we are not the, we don't nominate, but we actually have to ratify the appointments, which you get, each of you get. So I guess that's where we are, running too many parallel tracks. The new early childhood program will not be under the school board. A separate, complete organization with unelected people. And I think that, I've been in education 50 years, not to belie my age, but I'm that old.
He's old. No, I'm just kidding. Jason, keep going.
You're not about to go.
Seasoned.
That's a good way.
But I've seen a lot of changes, and I base my future, my existence, on public education. And we don't need too much duplicity. And I think that's what Ms. Bell was referencing.
Well, it's confusion, too. It is, it is a boil mess for teachers who have to file everything in the world. And then here, we have to file everything in the world, and we have to produce reports. And nobody complains about that, but the whole focus in schools and public education needs to be in the classroom. And she, she was a blue ribbon principal in Mobile.
Now, we're turning it back to.
So I got a lot of thoughts on that.
I know you do. I hear you.
Some of you may agree with, some of you may not. I think for me, I've never received a recommendation from anybody regarding my appointment to, or a recommendation to the charter school commission.
You will this time.
And we haven't heard from you either, but that's.
But I have the appointment. And if you want to have more influence in it, then have a conversation is the best way to do it. I've never received a recommendation. That's number one. Number two, I'm about outcomes, as a parent and as a practitioner and as a politician. So my district also holds me accountable for making certain that we're improving in the areas that we are falling below. Well, if we're not moving in those areas, and there's no plan, as I mentioned before, I've not received a plan to, there are schools that were failing 10 years ago that's on this list, that are still on the list today. There have been no improvement. So therefore, I can't sit down as a legislator or as a parent and continue to allow this to operate unaddressed. That's number one. That, I mean, that's where I am as a politician. And as a former educator, I have some idea on some things. But if we're not moving in the direction of having a plan on addressing these issues, then what are you expecting me to do? To sit back and just wonder? So I'm not trying to do your job, that's number one. And I've been an advocate on preventing the legislature from trying to control what happens in education without the consent or consideration of those that are currently in education. But if we're not receiving anything, that's, so if we're going to be communicating and be having an open dialogue with each other, then the expectation for me is to have a plan. I've said that since I've been in here today. Having a plan, I said this last time I met with you guys in the cafeteria or whatever room we were in. Having a plan. Because when there's no plan, it puts me in a situation as the leader of our caucus. It puts me in a position as the leader of our caucus to have to defend districts and legislators from a, the standpoint of, you know, their, their decision, asking them, what are we doing? You know? And so I think the way this has to work is that let's provide a plan, a path forward. And if the outcomes are where they need to be, you won't have any issues.
And I don't disagree one bit, but I think that's where that communication is crucial. And that's what has been deficient in the past.
And I'm not, I'm not a big talker. I look at the data. If the data is not there, I've been in legislation since 2014. And if the same situation, same school's on the list since 2014, and we're in 2023, that's a problem. From a parent and from a practitioner's standpoint, and that's unacceptable to me.
We couldn't agree more, Mr. Daniels. And part of what this very meeting about is to facilitate what you're asking for. Because we also are politicians. We don't, some of us don't like that title. I acknowledge I'm a politician. And so I understand my responsibility. I get calls, and I visit the schools, and though, we've talked to Dr. Mackey about, when are we going to say a school is not failing, but has failed? What's the mechanism that we move from that point? And even within the Huntsville district, I've been in communication with the staff about some significant problems. And each of us, I think, are. But I think fostering your understanding of where we want and what you're saying is crucial. Because we have lost that over time. And I haven't been on the board 28 years, but I've been subject to what the board does and the legislature does for more than that. So Scott, you wanted to comment.
I have one more.
Yes, sir.
I think at the end of the.
You had to make me shut up.
I'm, I'm tired of folks pointing the finger at the State Department or Dr. Mackey. Dr. Mackey can't get into these districts and teach out the classroom and every student. So these districts, you guys got to put more pressure on these districts to come up with plans to help move their district forward. Because it's easy to point the finger at the person that's over the, the, you know, department, but he's not the problem. And so the expectation is let's stop playing the finger, point the finger game and get it done. That's, that's where I am.
May I make a comment? Mr. Daniels, one thing that we have been discussing with Dr. Mackey is that in reading and in math, we have best practices, and we have some of the best people who are out there working in areas. However, we do see the need, and I have asked for a comprehensive plan that would indicate from kindergarten all the way up until 12th grade, what we should be doing in order to get better outcomes. And I think they've heard us, because we've talked about that, and they're working on that. Because as I've shared with Dr. Mackey, when I was a teacher and even a superintendent, we had a plan. We knew how reading should look in our schools. It was a framework. Even though we could go beyond the framework, it gave a basic standard. Because some of these districts that you're talking about that are not doing well, they don't have perhaps a leadership there who understands. So if we have a framework to assist in that process, I believe we would yield better results. So thank you.
Scott, do you?
Yeah.
I don't leave you out.
Absolutely. I think from hearing you talk, the thing that really sticks out to me is labeling legislators as non-responsive and.
It's not me saying that, that's where those communications, and I don't like to hear that.
Well, we've got some phenomenal, some of the best men and women in the state that I work with and have the honor of working with. Every time a piece of education legislation comes across my desk, guess who I call? I call my educators. I call the people who are in the trenches, who were fighting the war for us. I don't call anyone else. That's my source, and I'm very responsive to my constituents. So when I hear stuff like that, I take it offensive, and I know Leader Daniels is the same. So anytime we talk about education in the State House. So anytime we talk about education in the State House, I've got a degree in education, you know how many years I've sat in the classroom? Zero. So I call the people who are in the trenches, who are fighting the war, and I find out where they're at. Number one. And number two, and that's with anything. If something with, with police, I call my, my sheriffs, I call my police chiefs. So I mean, we've, our legislators are very responsive and they listen to their districts. And if there's one or two bad apples that are giving us that label, I'm going to stand up against it, because I think that's completely inaccurate. I think we've got some of the brightest, brightest men and women of our state, serving the state of Alabama. And I think this is a huge step forward, but we have to do a lot more than just one meeting.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And this is my fifth year, but my first year as my new role. So I'm sure that's why I'm sitting here. But I would love to, to take more steps and to find a pathway. Because as Leader Daniels said, pointing fingers gets nothing accomplished whatsoever.
I agree.
But we got to find that groove, and we got to work together and find out how we can make the state better. And that's our ultimate goal, no matter what. That's our goal.
Yes, I want to say one more thing. I think each of us, as we've grown in our role, and this is my fifth year, I started when you did first time, to be more active in your hearings and in your legislative reviews. And like when Arthur Orr was doing numerous things, Senator Orr and I communicated frequently. And if we didn't, it was my fault. And we're politicians, and the communication with the legislature is our responsibility, not yours. And we can say the same thing about our districts. But Belinda, you were.
Yes. Is this the good time?
I just said yes.
Yes. Having worked in a failing school, let me tell you, it is a shame that Alabama puts up with schools that continually let our children down. It is an embarrassment that we allow that to happen when we would not send our children or our grandchildren to those schools, but we expect other people to send theirs. Now, I have a proposal for you. What if, just imagine, what if you had all the funding that you needed? What if you didn't have to worry about pleasing everybody and running for office again? What if all you had to do was to as quickly as possible change the situations in those schools? And Melissa probably knows. Well, I'm excited about the possibility of doing that. And let's don't be afraid. Let's work together, and let's keep the kids first. We can't keep doing this year after year after year. And I'm not talking about other people's district. I have a couple that are on the bad list too. And I don't know what to do about those. I wish I could, I thought about going in, and then I thought, is that overstepping my bounds? Going into that school and just see what's going on? I've been a teacher for many years. I should be able to walk through the school and see if learning is going on or not, and why not, what's happening that learning isn't going on here. The school on which I taught, it was pretty obvious. Now, I didn't last very long. Because, because I'm old school and I believed in everyone showing the teacher respect. I expect the kids to do what I said. I expected a high performance. I was totally rejected, because I didn't know what I was doing. But Melissa, how do we change it? It's about the kids. And it's about this destructive pattern we keep doing in Alabama. We're wasting all this money and not getting our kids out of those schools that are, I say struggling, Dr. Reynolds says failed.
That's the term that's in our literature.
Yes, a law. But I have children who wanted to learn. When I finally quit, because I was having panic attacks, I had a little boy come up to me that stuck with me forever, that said, Ms. McGray, don't leave me. I'm learning from you. And I, so he's a man somewhere now, I hope, and I hope he's done really well. But that child haunts me to this day that I didn't know how to fix it for him. So can you tell me if you had no rules and regulations, and you had unlimited funds, how could we fix it and fix it as quickly as possible?
So, so I will say this. I don't care about the next election. I've always operated that way.
Yes.
So, because I have other things that I can do outside of this. This is about, this is basically, we don't get paid anything in addition to any other member of the legislature to do these jobs. These are volunteer jobs as leaders. So I don't, I've always said that I don't care about the next election. And so I don't make decisions, that's why I'm having a vote, I'm having a conversation with, this is how I am all the time. It's about the outcomes. And it's not a one-size-fits-all approach, as I've indicated before. Schools that are in areas that where percentage of the kids don't have access to an early childhood or cradle to a pre-K program period, they're going to be behind. So what are we doing? Are we looking at the individual areas to figure out what type of infrastructure is there? Like, those are the type of things that I'm asking for. Is so that we don't allow societal things to where their surrounding to dictate their future. Because if a kid grows up in a poor area, I did. You know, I was raised 30, 40 miles a year, and midway out there. But there was nothing, there was poverty around me. But I was able to make it out, but through the help of other people. It wasn't, and so I think what we got to do is, we got to look at everything that's involved in the child's life and that, in those individual communities. But right now, we're taking a one-size-fits-all approach to solve a problem that's much more complicated than that. The other thing, 20 years ago, you had more educators in the legislature than you have now. You've had a 32%, approximately 32% turnover in the last two cycles. That's where the communication breakdown is. If you're, if you have, we have 37, 36 new people coming in right now. We had 28 or so four years ago. So you have over 50% of the legislature that have changed over in the last eight years, well, five years, right? Then you got to rebuild relationships. So it's going to take you getting out there individually, introducing yourself, and meeting and visiting with these folks when they get on the trail, and not necessarily right before the session begins. Because at the end of the day, they've already missed out, because the solution is already being made. And so for me, you gotta, you gotta meet them where they are, because they're, it's, I mean, it's tough for me. And, and part of what I've done is I'm fortunate to have someone that's been an educator, that's coming in as new class, and just happened to be a lawyer now. And so people that understand, so identifying individuals that can help us in areas that we are missing the mark. And so having a conversation with somebody like that that gets it, you got to create more opportunities for advocates within the legislature. It just can't be me. I mean, I'm not the only person that has an education background. So just have these conversations early on.
Absolutely.
Everybody and their mom and dad trying to meet with us right now. Right before the session.
I see everybody trying to stop.
In the all cycle, like, we got to have these conversations about it. But you got to have that plan. And it can't be just for, it got to be a Mountain Brook-type plan. It has to be a Bullitt County-type plan, and it has to be a other, you know, urban-type plan. You got to have different options to say, here's how we believe we can solve it. And the data backs it up, right? That's what we're looking for. Let's not give legislators an opportunity to be bored at night and see something come across the street, across the screen from Kentucky or somewhere else and think, oh, we need to do it in Alabama. Because that's what's happening.
Yes, exactly.
So that's where we have to get to. And, and with that changeover, you got to understand, that changeover, you're getting new, these are like freshmen all over again. This is a kindergarten coming in. It's, it's like the, they're fresh off of whatever career they're in. But you got to help them understand education. And your, in your local areas, they have to be more engaged. I received a call, I mean, I met with the legislative contact team for AEA maybe a week or two ago, right? But I've not met with any other educators that have said anything. I go into school, I'm going on March 1st with Dr. Seuss, right? To read in an elementary school.
Read across America.
So I think for us, we got to not allow time right before the session or a special holiday or a special event to dictate our interaction. We got to be more, we got to be more proactive. And, and I think that's where the gap is, where, where I don't see that. If you said that we want to meet with legislators in your colleagues, I can make that happen like this, in every district across, every area that they represent across the state.
We're going to do that. We're going to do that.
I can do that.
We want to do that.
You need to make sure your messengers have a consistent, they're talking about, they're talking about a path forward. Don't just be happy to be in the room.
You've seen me, and you know how, and I know the mechanism we operate with. Ms. West, has a question or comment?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, because I have really learned so much today. I have a completely different experience in my role, completely different. I've only been here five years, but I cover 14 counties. I have a great relationship with every single legislator. They've been wonderful. I send them regular updates. Dr. Mackey, when he sends out our weekly update, I forward it. And we actually do have a plan through the Office of School Improvement, and it's individualized for schools. It's not as large as we would like, but it is growing. And I think if there's any takeaway from you today, I'm just sorry that you didn't know that, or that you haven't seen it, and that's our fault. That's my fault. I take responsibility, just like Dr. Mackey would. Anytime you don't know something that we're doing. So I just apologize for that, because my, my guys and ladies on the, those four, in those 14 counties, they may not always like what we're, you know, that it's not moving fast enough. But they, they at least are aware from me that we do have a plan. And it's called Alabama Chiefs, and it's very layered. And it's too complicated to explain in one meeting. But I would like to ask Dr. Mackey, could we send over the framework?
Oh, sure.
That we've been working on. I mean, when I, I was one of the first things when I came in on the board, that we asked, what is our strategic plan? And then does our funding tie back to that plan? And as we grow and meet our goals, is the funding tied directly to the places it needs to go? And I think that's starting to happen. The board recently had a discussion about funding going to the areas of highest need, which I think is exactly what you're talking about. So, so I do thank you for coming today, because I've learned that we've not communicated well enough for you to know that there is a plan. And, and, and I do know that we can't control the zero to P. You know, that's not under our purview, but we can absolutely partner with the people that do control zero to P and offer our assistance in any way that we can as a department. And I would certainly support that.
It directly impacts your ability in the area. So you're.
Sure.
Fizzling to having that high expectation, and you only can take what you receive. You can be involved in front, and that's the only way.
Right. And I did talk to Secretary Ross, when she was in her position several times, about extending pre-K. And, you know, I, I was told it just needed to stay small and just grow incrementally, that we really couldn't expand across the state, that that would be too, too much of a heavy lift. But I certainly do support pre-K and its, and the expansion there. So, and in my area, in my district, we are growing classrooms across districts too. I can't speak for other districts. But, but I do appreciate your communication today, and I get you loud and clear.
And you have a mayor that's engaged in the process, and that's Gary Fuller.
Yes, Gary Fuller.
Where I went to a conference with him on pre-K, early childhood. So he's engaged, and so.
He's expanding rapidly.
Absolutely. So I think other folks and other administrators can take note of him being engaged and trying to make certain that the access is there, because he realizes the importance.
This is an important meeting for us. Scott, did you have any?
I did.
I don't want to leave you out, but.
That's okay. So charter schools, majority of the time that they're established, what type of communities are they established in? What school systems are they established near?
Well, the charter commission is set up independently. Logan Cersei is right back there.
Well, I'll answer the question.
Okay.
It's near, it's near schools that are not doing well.
That are struggling.
That are struggling, correct? Which is great. It's a great concept, right?
Some areas where actually they're close to schools that are actually thriving. But, and I know Dr. Richardson and I have shared a district that is actually very well-known and very respected and does well. So it depends.
Okay, well, my concern is not that charter school. My concern is after that charter school is established and up and running, my concern is that school that's still there. My concern is those students that are still there that didn't get the opportunity to go to the charter school.
Absolutely.
What message are we giving them? What are we doing for them? Nothing. Matter of fact, we're saying, you're not good enough for this school. So we're just going to leave you down there, and good luck. And we're giving that message to the educators, we're giving it to the administrators, and the teachers, and the parents in that community. So my question is, how are we going to fix that situation? I'm not against charter schools. How are we going to fix the student you're talking about years ago? Because that's what this is about. This is our school system's failing because of those schools. And the message we're sending them.
One answer I can give you quick and dirty, return the charter school chartering and oversight to this school board. So then we can coordinate it. When you form a charter school, and I can name several, in Perry County, that takes the teachers and the pupils from Selma and Dallas County, and concentrate them, and actually dilutes the effectiveness of that school. And Dr. Chestnut could probably speak very well to that. We don't control that. And in terms of the charter commission, when a recent position came open that was controlled by the speaker, I advised him on who he should select among populations. And he changed his, he made a selection that we think is going to improve it. And when your position comes open next year, I know who it is, and you will hear from me or others, because that's a problem. That the, the separation of charter schools in a separate entity makes us not be able to answer your question, Scott. Because when, there are some schools now that I know are not meeting the mark to qualify to be retained as a charter school, but there are political aspects that won't, that one school, and I can name them, but I choose not to in this public forum, to renew them regardless of what they are, because of some political influence, unfortunately, within the legislature. And I know who, and you know who I'm talking about. But we're, we accept responsibility. I am a politician. I'm elected. I'm a lifelong educator. I, like Mr. Daniels, and he knows a little bit of my background, owe everything in my life to public education. So we want to be involved, and we want to work with you to be responsible for education in Alabama. Because that's what the constitutional officer, when I swore in on 16, that's what it meant. I was there with the lieutenant, got everybody else. Somebody said, why are these state school boards up there? Because we used to be important, I guess. But we're not, always. Ms. Daniels, you, I try to be fair, but I talk too much.
Thank you. Both of you mentioned funding for Burke to kindergarten. And as a board member on a local board before I came here, what we learned was this, the funding costs the local school board many dollars. Because the classrooms have to meet high standards, that's good. They have to have a teacher and at least an aide, that's not bad. But they have to use our classroom space. Many of our schools don't have any of those capabilities, and the funding that we get does not cover that. So that's one reason I think that, that our poverty areas are not having that advantage of having preschool programs, is because the funding's not equal in those areas, because those school systems don't have the local funds to, to. because those school systems don't have the local funds to, to remedy that. So, that would be something that would be helpful. Once again, it doesn't come through the State Department, it comes straight from the, the other group. Yes, early childhood, thank you.
From a facility standpoint, we've heard, and I've heard from some county commissioners that they've been approached about doing pre-K program in the area. You have vacant buildings in some of these communities that straps out the school. You have a library, I mean, you have spaces like libraries, you have boys and girls' floor. They aren't, there are those at the school from all that. I'm looking at, I'm, I'm not opposed to a mixed delivery system, meaning that even if it's a church, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I think when we get to allowing barriers like space in an existing structure and not thinking about and being creative, that, that's problematic for me. If it's about the child, which I know it is for all of you, then we need to make certain that we are being as accommodating as possible and flexible as possible to get, get it done. Because at the end of the day, they're coming to your public school, and you want them ready.
And that's my point. Because those barriers are there, it's not happening. And no one else has stepped up to partner with that.
So, there are some local districts, like in Lee County, we talked about Mayor Fuller and others that have, if your local municipal government is engaged in it, there are a lot of space, a lot of assets that we have from a local, from a local and county commissioner's standpoint, as well as the state of Alabama, that can be utilized, that may not necessarily house those students at that institute. Yeah, but it may be somewhere else where you can do some shared resources. And with, right now, with the, from a technology standpoint, we could utilize some of the technological aspect to really help support that as well. So, it just, those are some of the things that I think, because most of them, it's almost like they're operating separate from the K-12 system, even although they're housed inside of a school. And so, I think we just gotta be creative and not allow a facility barrier to be the reason that we
Well, and that's just a piece up. The, the facility is a problem. Do you see that, do you see this collaboration in some of those poverty areas that you were talking about?
In some areas that are more urban centers, I'm seeing in smaller urban centers, I'm seeing a collaboration. But I don't even see the mayors actually being engaged unless their economic developers tell them, hey, this is, this could be a barrier long-term. We got to do this in order to yield a return, long-term for us to be a good industry because of the access. So, I see that in a lot of, I don't see it in rural areas as much. And, but I do see private daycares in some of these rural areas that are operating home daycares and others. But if they're, they outreach there to kind of get them from a curriculum standpoint, to make certain that the folks that are in front of those children have the basics, I think it's, it's, it's pretty critical.
It, it has been a barrier in some of the areas that I'm in.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Dr. Chestnut?
Yes, I wanna say thank you for your comments. You know, several things have come to mind. I've sat here and I've listened, and I'm glad to hear a lot of what you've shared. I heard your heart. And I know we talked about those underserved school districts and areas in the state of Alabama, and I represent probably more of them than anyone else. I know that I'm new to the board, but not new to education. And, but if I could just be honest, I first wanna say thank you for your candidness. But it also shows that we've dropped the ball, the ball as a board. When you said that no one has ever reached out to you, what that says to me is that we've gotta make a greater effort and taking an initiative in being proactive rather than reactive. And I'm glad that this conversation has taken place. I think it will drive us to be who we should be, that if we haven't given you anything, then there's no reason for you to think that we have a plan. I know that we have a plan, but if it's not known, you know, it's kind of like in the business world, if it's not written, it didn't happen. If we have a plan and no one knows that it exists, then we have to put forth a greater effort to make sure that it's clear. Clear to those in legislators, clear to our communities, clear across this state. And so, this has been very, very beneficial. I'm especially excited to hear your passion, both of you, about what are we going to do different for those schools that continue to not show the results that we're looking for. I know if you do the same thing, you get the same results. And so, I look forward to us reimagining our processes. I look forward to reimagining our practices so that kids across the state of Alabama have the same opportunities. I was so impressed and so thrilled to go to Auburn recently. But it broke my heart when I left Auburn, knowing that the kids, most of the kids that I represent don't have that opportunity. So, to hear you all say that your desire is for every kid to be afforded the same educational opportunity is very encouraging to me. It tells me I've gotta step up my game. Yes, I've gone to every school district that I represent. But if I'm not reaching out and being intentional and making sure that we communicate, that we hear of what is being said and what's being done, I see the gaps, and I wanna thank you all for sharing that. You were so kind, and how do you say it? And, you know. But I think it's going to be a win-win, because at the end of the day, I believe we all desire the same thing. And that is to make sure that the children in Alabama get the best quality education. So, I just wanna thank you for your time and for your commitment. And I can't speak for the board, but I can speak for Tommy Chestnut, that I will be more diligent in making sure that I communicate with the legislators. Because we're in this together.
And I do too.
Please. Whenever you say.
Richardson, Dr. Richardson, please.
Yeah, it's just one point of clarity, and I've been talking to Dr. Mackey. We do have a strategic plan, Alabama achieves, as Ms. West mentioned, and also Dr. Chestnut. However, when you talk about outcomes, I think we're gonna have to get more specific to look at the areas of reading and math, and a framework that will assist those struggling districts. So, yes, we do have a plan, but I think we're gonna have to go beyond a global plan to get more specific in line with learner outcomes and what's it's going to take to really rid ourselves of the large number of struggling schools that we have. And that's what we were discussing. So, yes, we, it's not that we don't have a plan. We do, a wonderful plan. But I think we're gonna have to get more specific to look at the data and address where we are, not just best practices, because all best practices don't work in all school districts. But we're gonna have to look at a framework from kindergarten all the way up to high school. A framework, meaning that in Mountain Brook, they may look at it for the basics, but they always can supplement. Some of these districts that you're talking about, as I said earlier, don't have a framework. So, we're gonna have to provide it. When Dr. Chestnut says maybe we have dropped the ball to a certain degree, because I think we can get more specific. And we have the people on staff who can do that, Ms. Short and others. So, we'll get there, not pointing fingers, but we know we have our work to do. So, thank you for challenging us and, and bringing to fruition what some of us have been requesting. But I think today it became clear to all of us as to what we need.
I think you will see us at the legislature. I think you'll see us at your committee meetings. And individually, we all recognize our responsibility. The one thing I wanna say that's not been said is this board, to a person, supports parental involvement. Sometimes that's been in the discussion in other states. And there's been some perceptions that parental involvement is not welcome. I get involved in parental involvement regularly, as you probably know, when I, we both get calls, and we show up. But parents are invited to be at their local school board. The one thing that I would tell every parent, as a parent, and as is what administrator, if you show up at the school board, you talk to the superintendent, you were, your voice will be heard, just like we talk about, we need, we need to communicate better with you. Some of the manifestations of misunderstandings happen because they don't show up to the school. And I had a parent yesterday, and I guided him through, and he finally went, met with the superintendent, and he called me, he says, Dr. Reynolds, they did listen to me. I said, of course. Because if you didn't, I was gonna have another avenue to communicate with. So, we're doing that. It's about lunchtime.
Well, I wanna say something before then.
You're certainly welcome, Ms. Bell.
Okay, thank you. And I don't want to hold up lunch.
You're all right, we're used to it.
I do want you to. Well, that's not true.
I mean, holding up lunch.
But I just want to thank you, Anthony and Scott, and I'm Stephanie, so that in the future, we know each other by our first names. And I know each board member shares that interest in trying to build that relationship. And I do want you to live here knowing how much we do appreciate the interaction, the communication. And it's a wonderful beginning. And I'm thankful that we're able to do it before the legislative session. And I think that we share your concern for education. I don't think there is any doubt that we're all passionate about what is happening, not happening in the classrooms in the state. And so, I don't want you to live here thinking that if this is, you know, we're against each other, because we're not. The whole purpose is to build that relationship that I have seen in the past, and I actually have with my legislators from all over my district. And sometimes they'll call me before I even call, think about calling them, and they'll let me know about something that is, is in the hopper, and they're concerned about it because they read something, and I'll agree. And, and that is encouraging to me as well. So, I know that you tend to connect more with those from your district, and that's what each of us, I think we all do that in our own districts, and that makes a big difference. But, but I think moving forward, this relationship will be a very positive, will have a very positive impact on education in Alabama. And I see it in other states. At the national level, when I meet with those who are in the legislature, I, I serve on an executive committee with, I've served with probably eight governors over the last how many years? Not in Alabama, but, yes, in Alabama, but nationwide committee. And so, you see a perspective where we're not the only ones who need that communication. And in the states where they have that communication, you see a strong system of education. That happened in Mississippi. And it was everyone involved in what happened with their reading program, which is now actually being duplicated up in North Dakota, having talked to the superintendent, the state superintendent in North Dakota. But it, it's what ma, it, what's actually makes a difference. And my district certainly has its problems, but as Dr. Chestnut has already shared, the thing that's heartbreaking over the years is how things haven't changed a whole lot in parts of what we call District Five. And that's where, those areas are where we absolutely need to focus. And we need to include the areas like the one that Belinda shared about. Those are all over Alabama. But we can do that if we work together and we have that communication. And where those barriers that keep this board from now and just little areas where we are limited in what we can do, and we shouldn't be. We shouldn't be. Because it can be helpful in the long run, and I always look at government. If we're not sitting here ten or fifteen, twenty years down the road, I wanna tell you how old I'll be. You may be, but I will not be, more than likely. The bottom line is that we want to put in place something that will continue to work, not just for the next election. I don't think anyone here thinks that way. I certainly haven't, obviously. I've had some interesting rides over the years, the elections. But the bottom line is, we want something that will be so positive that we don't have to worry about it in the future.
Gentlemen, we thank you. We expect you to join us for lunch. We're going to
Ms. Ziegler.
I will, just a moment.
Okay.
Next month, tell your colleagues in the Senate, the Pro-Tim and the Minority Leader of the Senate will be here next month. So, you let them know, it's not bad. Alan Baker was here last week, and it's part of our program to be responsible. And Ms. Ziegler.
May I? Everybody else, I didn't want you to think I didn't have anything to say. But being married to Jim Ziegler, I know I have to sort of force my way out of it. But may I say, of course, thank you. And, and you don't understand how the kids, our kids, appreciate y'all coming and listening to them. It warms up, you know, your heart to see these seventh graders that have such a potential coming for y'all to come to them. I, I appreciate and I applaud you, and I thank you for doing that, because I thought they played beautifully for us. And the other thing that I have always emphasized, that when I was the principal, it is the leadership at the local school level. You've got to have the leader who is properly trained, supported, and knows what needs to be done. And with that, great things could happen. So, that drilling down from the strategic plan needs to come to, I had my own strategic plan because I knew. And I'll tell you what I learned most of all. I would get my report card, and I got the clear, and I got the A. But then when I learned to really drill down, even though I got the clear, I had some kids that were not clear. And when I finally admitted it, looked at our wards, and figured out how to do it, that's when it became the national blue ribbon. It's just a matter, you have to look at your wards. Applaud what's going well, keep your finger on it, but you must always step back and punt when necessary. But if you don't, and it's hard, you know, hurtful to look at your wards, but we've got to do it. So, again, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We will recess till 1:45. Are you gonna be able to join us for lunch?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I didn't know if you were looking at me or my
I'm looking between the two of you.
There you go. I'm definitely but I also think that moving forward, we need to have difficult conversations. We need to have difficult conversations.
Dr. Madison, do you want to for food quickly?
Yes, and we started one of us.
This is a good start, but we need to
I, I agree. But thank y'all for having us. But thank y'all for having us.
The next item on the agenda is Dr. Lee Meadows with STEM. Dr. Meadows?
It's good to be here. It's an honor. Lee Meadows, I was with UAB in the School of Education for about 30 years. I've been directing the Alabama STEM Council for about two and a half now, two and a half years now, and I have good news.
Yay!
And I thought you would like that. I've been here for the meeting for like the last hour previously, and I thought some good news might be good. Here's my good news. I want you to picture 250 new STEM teachers every year in Alabama.
That is good news.
I want you to picture that and think about that because it's happening. With UTech Alabama, it's going to take us three to four years to get there because the programs start at seven universities with freshmen, so we've got to build the program out. But these seven universities, when they're fully built out, we will have 250 new STEM teachers every year, and this is a game changer, as I'm sure you know. I spent those years in the School of Education teaching science teachers. There was always a shortage. There were only two times in my whole career when there wasn't a shortage, and those were the two recessions before the Great Recession. And in those two recessions, for about two years, no school districts were calling in saying, "We need teachers." During the Great Recession, they still were. We have always had a significant shortage in science teachers and math teachers in Alabama, and that's about to change. The number of 250 is from the seven proposals that were funded. That's where I got that. I went through, looked at what they're doing and where they're going to be in their fourth year, added up all the teachers, the graduates they have, and it's 250. So here's the partnership. It's the Legislature, the STEM Council, and the UTech Institute. The Legislature has put $4.5 million in this partnership, and that's a line on annual appropriation. So there's some good news. Our Legislature is putting in $4.5 million a year to end the STEM teacher shortage. That's unheard of. ACH is a fiscal agent. The RFP process gave grants through, it was run through ACH, and these grants are going to the universities through ACH, as they should. That's what ACH does. The UTech Institute, so this is the UTech model. I'll tell you about that in a little bit. It started in Texas, and it was so successful that they realized they needed their own mentoring organization to help launch other sites. That's the UTech Institute. They will be mentoring the six new sites as they build up, as they did with me at UAB Teach when I was there helping to build UAB Teach. So these sites will be, there's an evaluation from the UTech Institute, but it's really mostly coaching, mentoring, helping them launch. The STEM Council is giving oversight to this whole process and to connect back to some of the conversations that we're going to, what our legislative leaders are saying. Think of the workforce development here because, as we all know, workforce development starts in K-12 STEM classrooms. As y'all are saying, it's pre-K, it's elementary, middle school, and high school. Well, what's our biggest problem, one of our biggest, if not our biggest problem in middle school and high school student classes? They're our teachers. And we may be at the point in Alabama when these are fully up and building where every kid here, I'd say, or almost every kid, has a qualified, competent science teacher, grade six through 12.
Now, did you say the 250 new STEM teachers each year? That's not saying they're here now. You're saying upon completion of, I just want to make sure I heard that.
The programs have to build out.
And you said maybe four?
Yeah, they have to build out. They will start this fall.
Okay.
They'll start this summer recruiting incoming freshmen.
Okay.
And then they build the program, freshman, sophomore, they build it for years.
Okay, thank you.
And y'all, you can tell I'm excited. I'm excited.
Good.
This is amazing. So here are the universities.
Yeah.
We did an RFP process. Eleven universities came in this summer with letters of interest. Six, these six actually submitted proposals, and the UTech Institute ran the scoring for us, and they came back to us. We were looking for four to five. They came back to us about a month in and said, "Lee, you've got a problem, and it's a really good problem. All six proposals are high quality, and we recommend you funding all six sites." So, and you can see the geographic spread. In the center of Birmingham, that's UAB Teach, that's the program that I helped lead to start off. So it's existing. It's been going since 2014. So it's fully built out. And then you can see the other seven there. One HBCU was fantastic when they ran the mix in the proposals, and you can see the geographic spread across the state. I think one thing that really excites me about this is, you know, y'all were talking when I was here, when I came in, you were talking about all the problems in schools. And I was, I started my career as a chemistry and physics teacher back in the dark ages before there was internet. And I have to tell young teachers, yes, we could actually teach without the internet. It was amazing. We could actually do it. But they, I don't think the general public understands how difficult it is for a school to run well if you don't have trained, dedicated, competent teachers. And when I say that, I have to be very careful to, I'm not speaking ill of the men and women who don't have training, and they say, "I'll jump in. I'll be a teacher on an emergency certificate. I'll do my best." But we know from the staffs that it's really that good training that helps them succeed. So again, I don't think we at Alabama know the good things that are coming when every school system has a talent pool of STEM teachers. I just don't. So nationally, this is where the UTech model nationally, so there are 56 universities that are already doing the UTech model, including UAB Teach, in 23 states and the District of Columbia. Now, look at these staffs. They are mind blowing. Eighty-four percent of the graduates of UTech sites naturally go into teaching, so they enter the classroom, and 87% are still teaching there five years later. Now, you may or might, may or may not know this about STEM teachers, about science and math teachers, they often don't stay. They have degrees in STEM, they have other options. As some of you said earlier, and you've had the direct experience, teaching is really hard. And it is, I've been there, it's really hard. But look at those stats. They stay. And then the last stat is also amazing. They choose, 68% of them are choosing to go into low-income schools and stay. Part of the UTech model is they have to do all of their field experiences in Title I school. Well, when they learn how to teach in Title I schools, they will choose Title I schools for where they go. So that's the national picture. Let me tell you just a little bit about UAB Teach. Oh, nationally, I missed, so nationally, the model is that these are STEM majors who are adding a teaching certificate. Now, this is different, so let me let you wrap your head around this. They are not education majors. Say that one more time. The UTech model, they are STEM majors, and they add a teaching certificate. In some of the universities, like Florida State, they add, they do a double major, STEM plus STEM education. But every time you say to a STEM major who wants to be a teacher, and here's another requirement, and here's another requirement, they drop out. So at UAB, the program that has been going there that we built was, they get a STEM major, a STEM education minor, and an Alabama Class B teaching certificate. It is not alternative route, it is not emergency, this is full certification. So these are biology majors, chemistry majors, physics majors, mathematics majors, all five engineering fields. I think they've added computer science in there too. They are STEM majors who are getting a teaching certificate, and y'all, they do that with no extra time. If they come in as a freshman, they can get their STEM major and a teaching certificate at no extra time. And then if you know today's young people, the fact that they have options, "I've got a STEM major, I've got a teaching certificate, I can go be a teacher, I can go teach for two or three years," kind of like a Teach for America thing, and then I can go back to industry, I could go to industry. If I realize I missed the classroom, they love it. Today's students love it. There are some stats on UAB since we've been around, 65 graduates, 58 certified, 41 currently teaching, more math than science. And a note on the legislative funding, I mentioned the $4.5 million appropriation. Part of that goes back to UAB Teach to let them add the recruiting, retention, and induction efforts that they lost when they came off of the initial grant. So they're going to be able to add that and put those numbers back up. This was, those students, you can see me, they're in that, in the blue shirt, those students, they, probably the greatest joy of my career was the years I spent with UAB Teach students. They are rock stars and rocket scientists. They are the kind of STEM majors who say, "I'll look into teaching. In fact, I'm going to go into teaching." At UAB, you probably know UAB's diversity. Well, you take UAB's diversity and then you look at STEM majors, and the diversity drops off some. You look at UAB Teach, and the diversity goes right back up to UAB's numbers. And then the amazing thing is, is UAB is producing a talent pool of teachers that are going to be role models for kids of color, women, girls and women, all kinds of kids across Alabama are going to see a diverse teaching workforce in front of them. One of the things that works the most about a UAB, about a UTech model is early field experiences. So the first recruiting course, Step One, they recruit in the summer, get them to take the Step One course as freshmen. It's a one semester hour recruiting course, exploration course, and in that course, they go out and teach in an upper elementary school, two or three lessons. And the thing that happens is about half of them, maybe a few more, come back and are like, "Y'all, I never thought about teaching before. I kind of like this." Or even the best ones were when they come back and were like, "I was a baby. Those kids absolutely love me. I'm a great teacher." And they are. And then the field experiences, I believe out of the eight semesters of the program, six of those have field experiences where they're at in school. And of course, if you know about teacher preparation, that's a game changer. Either way, if you would like to meet some of these rock stars and rocket scientists, Dr. Paulette Evans, the director of UAB Teach, would be happy to host you, and I would be happy to work with her to bring some of them if y'all would like to meet some of the UAB Teach students or graduates.
Absolutely.
Because they really are amazing. So I'm almost done. I wanted to go fast, but here's, so this fall, I mentioned recruiting now happens, starts happening this summer. I met with the new co-director. So every site has a co-director model for leading. One director from the School of Education, one from the College of Arts and Sciences in the science and mathematics. I met with them on Tuesday for their kickoff, and they're all committed to recruiting this summer. So this, by looking at the proposals again, this fall, we should have 325 students around the state, STEM majors, exploring teaching. And that's where we begin to get the numbers because you cast a wide net.
Sure.
Sure. Half of them at the end of the course kind of go, "Nope, I tried teaching and I don't want to be a teacher." But like if these numbers hold up, that's probably 150 STEM majors who've never thought about teaching because of that Step One course experience, then they're in the pipeline as teachers. They may not stay the whole time, but it's a way to introduce STEM teaching to them. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. This is the STEM Council. This is what we do. I've listed some of the other programs that we're working on, teacher externships. I have a portal called STEM near me that lets parents, families find STEM programs close to them around the state. But one thing I wanted to point out is STEM ecosystems. If you're not familiar with that, you're going to hear about it. It's another national program. There are 100 STEM ecosystems around the nation. Currently in Alabama, there's zero. The STEM Council's out to change that. A STEM ecosystem is a local or regional partnership, so it can be pre, it can be educators and workforce trying to build a STEM pipeline from pre-K all the way through high school, college, and beyond to give that region the STEM workforce that it needs. We are in the process of launching the Alabama STEM ecosystem, the statewide ecosystem. We've done three days of design studios around the state, gotten input from hundreds of people around the state. That launches soon, and then the mission of the Alabama STEM ecosystem is then to launch local and regional ecosystems around the state. And we've already got three or four areas that already want to get in launch mode. So happy to answer any questions about the STEM Council, but more than happy to answer any questions about UTech Alabama.
Very exciting.
Yes.
Can you share a little bit about the teacher externship?
Sure. Teacher externships, that's a program we are ramping up into our third year, and in that program, middle and high school teachers and then possibly community college instructors, they go to a STEM industry in the summer and spend three to five days working in that industry. The STEM Council pays them stipend for that work, and then that helps them make real-world connections when they go back to the classroom in the fall. And it has been, so we had, we did the pilot the first year with like 14. I think last summer, we expanded it to about 41 or 42 teachers, and across the board, every single teacher was like, "This was amazing. This was great." I'm a career educator, so I'm a STEM person, and I've never once worked in a STEM industry. And that's the way most educators are. So this is a game changer for them because they get to experience the modern STEM workplace and then make those connections when they go back to classrooms.
Would you please expound the STEM proficiency data dashboard?
Yes. STEM proficiency data dashboard is available right now on our website. We took the proficiency data from ACAP and Pre-Prior and ACT, all of that K-12, and we, and so when you go there, you can see the STEM scores for 2016 to the present. So that's one of the few places where people can look and see trends across the years. So we were using proficiency scores. Many of you know that at the elementary level in that time period, we changed the test three times. But you also, y'all also know, we were reporting proficiency, one, two, three, four on all of those. So we're using those proficiency scores. It's set up where you can look at a school system as compared to the state average. That's what we really wanted to look at. It also highlights at the very top ethnicity, race, poverty level, native, ESL, because we wanted to say at the very top, don't look at the scores only, you've got to look at how complex getting kids proficient is in some school system because of all the barriers. So we wanted it to be more of a fair way to look at those numbers. Also, when you look, when you pull up a school system, if you go to the bottom, you actually can see the scores by building, by the schools in each of those. So it just, a lot of people had said to us, "How are we doing? What's going on? Why can't we see the data?" So we wanted to solve that problem, and it's out there on our So we wanted to solve that problem, and it's out there on our question.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Meadows.
Thank you, sir. May I have a question? May I ask a question? Would this be a certification that would get the TEAMS contract?
Yes, it absolutely would. It could be, like, if they get their certificate, there's no reason they couldn't. The only reason I'm hesitating is it depends on what they're teaching. Because the TEAMS law says they have to have the math-science certification or computer science and be teaching more than half time in a math and science. And that's where we've had the hardest problem with TEAMS contracts, people that say have a, I mean, believe it or not, they have a math certification, but the majority of their day, they're not teaching math, they're teaching something else. But as far as the degree, absolutely, it would qualify for the TEAMS contract. And hopefully, those people will be placed in math and science courses soon, I think. I've had the chance, of course, Dr. Meadows and I have talked, we've been comparing notes on this for years, and he did not say, but he's the one who brought UTeach to Alabama and set it up in the beginning at UAB. And there've had some great teachers come out, but I will never forget my one anecdotal story when I was at Woodland High School for an event, met a young man at Woodland who had no intention to teach, but he was at UAB studying something in the STEM field, got into your program, and may still be at Woodland High School, he may have moved to another school.
I figured you're thinking about Muhammad Jan.
Yep.
He's amazing. He has become a physical therapist now?
Oh, so we lost him after a while.
But he made some great change, great impact there while he was there, and I think he loved his heart of the classroom.
Yeah, well, maybe he'll come back one day, you know, that's the thing, he's got his teaching certificate, he obviously contributed a lot to some children's lives, had a very tough school, and then maybe one day he'll come back. But that, just, I know that's one, but I just met by accident when I was at Woodland, and I'm sure there are many more out there. And there'll be a lot more now because we've got this, more schools participating, so very important.
One last thing I'll say is Alabama now has the highest concentration of UTeach sites in the nation. We went from one to the highest. There are, Texas has more numbers, but nobody has the height, the concentration we do. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Dr. Meadows. Pursuing the agenda, item three, board questions. And since Ms. Bannon already started, if you don't have any questions, Ms. Bannon, we, board questions are next on the agenda. You already asked one, you have any more?
I asked Mr. Mark on my question, he's taking care of it.
Great. Board questions, please.
How does the Alabama STEM that he, with his council align with the new recruiting opportunities that the State Department has just recently implemented?
Good question.
Is there alignment?
Oh, absolutely, and I, Dr. Meadows may want to stay close. Yeah, so we, so the STEM Council just realized they're much bigger, they're, one of the reasons they are tied to the Commerce Department and not us is they are not K-12 education, and they are not just education, they're, you know, the governor set that up, it's kind of a lifetime birth through your last career focus. For their K-12 piece, we're closely aligned. So we have people on the STEM Council, I'm technically on it, though I never get to go to the meetings, we do have people that go to all the meetings. This is really the first foray into recruiting more teachers, so a lot of their other work has been on other things. But the UTeach model and rolling it out to more colleges has been a collaborative effort. Now, he had to get funding from the budget chairs and the budget to do that. Our role in that obviously doesn't come through our budget because it goes to the Department of Commerce and it's part of their budget.
Actually to APE.
To APE, sorry, that money goes to APE. So he's got money then in APE, got money at Commerce, which technically lays it through the Department of Commerce. But, you know, I got calls about that, "Are you going to oppose this?" Well, why would we oppose that? But this was not something that was in the original budget development, it was a part of something that came along, or at least to us, it came after the, I guess the legislature was in session last year. So Lee had worked really hard on it, got those budget chairs on his page, so we collaborate on that. Now, it's very closely tied to our TEAMS contracts, and then we will use this as a part of our recruitment measure with our recruiters too, but it's got to get set up and running. So we collaborate pretty often, in fact, we've got, we just, we're talking, we've got to set up a call tomorrow because he's got some things for me and I've got some things for him. You know, we have two new recruiters working, and so I don't know how much they are in, they're in the loop on this yet, but we'll make sure they are as it gets up and running. I think the struggle is going to be what Dr. Meadows alluded to in my comment a minute ago, these are such, you know, they're STEM majors, and we're convincing them to get a teaching certificate and convincing them to stay in teaching like this young man, I can't blame him for becoming a physical therapist, but at least he gave a few years of education.
And remember the national staff, oh, eighty-five percent are staying.
Yeah.
We lost one.
Yeah.
Of course, but most of them stayed for five years or more.
That's a very good question. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am? You've got a list?
Nothing. With the, when we release time for the science standards and textbooks and all that, how are we, and whether it's, and science is coming up, right, and then we, and all the, what I just heard it called workforce, you know, all those different, how are we getting the word out? And I know that you're, have some that are wanting to look at the reading and all that. I have a lot of people that say, "We didn't hear about it in time," and then, you know, and then, so how are we doing, and sort of hearing what we're hearing from everybody, our communication, how are we communicating so people are aware and allow them time to look at it? And I think the more we're transparent and give them the opportunity to feel that they have comment time, and I know sometimes we put out and they get zero comments, is it because they're not interested, or was they're not aware of it, or was it not enough of a time, you know, frame for it to be done? I just think we need to do a, no, yeoman's job of getting that word out, and so that's my appeal.
Those are good questions, I obviously can't answer why people don't respond, I know you're not, you're just really asking that. I think, so science is this year.
Correct.
So let's talk specifically about science, y'all approved the appointments to the science course of study, not textbooks, the course of study committee back in November, they will start meeting this month, I think, we are, no, look, Ms. Stevens is here, good, they're already meeting, there are lots of them. We're also doing career tech right now.
That's it.
They will have a, and they're, remember that we aligned that on purpose because we're taking the career tech, science, STEM fields and doing them at the same time we're doing STEM science. This will be the first time we've been able to make that alignment work. So in the hopes that those STEM fields that can, STEM career tech fields that can lead to science articulation, they'll be able to work together on the standards and make sure they overlap well enough. I'd like to go back and look, I know we gave y'all a draft calendar, but they'll be out, that first draft will be here for public comment by late summer. And, you know, I don't know, Dr. Sibley's around somewhere, we disseminate it wide, we put it out on the website, we send it to every press outlet in the state, there are hundreds that get it, we, I mean, you know, with math and BLA, I talked about both of them on TV, and we still usually get less than ten comments statewide. So I would, I mean, we'll talk about it in a board meeting, and I would say if you know folks, disseminate it, which we send it out to all the superintendents, Dr. Sibley, again, I've lost it, he's somewhere, but I would say this for him, he has been working, and then we'll let Sean Stevens speak because he's jumping to it, I don't want to let him, but, but Dr. Sibley's been working on a newsletter, now you know we do a weekly something for superintendents? But this won't be monthly, or certainly won't be weekly, but a newsletter directly to teachers. Now that's over 50,000 email addresses. But we sent one, we've sent one this year, and it worked. And he and Dave Pope and our technical group, they have worked really hard on that because we tried this once before, but it's so many emails, we had to go through, we had to actually contract with a private email server to do it. And because the districts didn't recognize the private server, they bounced a lot of them, wouldn't let them through, which, so we went back to see, you know, can we build a system that we can send out that won't, the concern was if a bunch of them bounced back, it would actually shut down our whole email system at the department, if you've got 10,000 bounce backs in a day. And so, but they worked through it, and we've sent one out, and we have gotten glowing reviews from teachers across the state, "Thank you for doing this." So that will be another way to communicate directly to teachers. Now that does not get at the public that may not be in education. Now that's, our problem is that other than the media, and y'all know we've had, I think we had, I counted eight media outlets here this morning, so we constantly talking to media, but other than the media, our main way of communicating is to the school districts, and I don't know another, but I think as we get to that draft, this will be, that'll be a big one, I'm getting very little comments right now on science, we're getting, we're already getting inquiries about social studies, which will be next year, and have been getting inquiries about social studies for several months, but thus far, I've not had a single inquiry about science. But I, you know, I think there will be as we get closer, so that's, I think that gets to the, you know, the kind of heart of it, but we don't need to lose that. I, it's, hey, Mr. Mark, will you take this, that's pretty important, and then I'll come out, leave me a minute. Lost my train of thought, but anyway, we, it doesn't matter how hard we try, we always, somebody comes along later and says, "I didn't know."
I didn't know.
And I don't know how, you know, you reach everybody, but certainly we'll try to do some more.
Well, and I'm saying they're all in more increasing, but, you know, science, math, reading, social studies, those are ones that parents really sort of, sort of not the pushback, but they're becoming, they're becoming vested in it, which I applaud, I want them to be involved.
Let me say this quickly, and I, Sean may have more, he wants to say, Ms. Stevens, but, so that you said, I think you said standards, textbooks too, textbooks are a little different because we, we can, because textbooks are contracts with vendors, and as y'all know, we're going to talk about some textbooks here in a few minutes, and we cannot release those textbook things until the contract's been signed, no, not the contract, until the board votes on it. It used to be until the governor had signed the contract, y'all advocated we got to change that law, so we can now make it public as soon as the board votes on it, even though it technically is at least another month before the governor would get the contracts fully signed and executed. It's not, that's not the governor's fault, they go first to the vendors, sometimes they hold them for four or five weeks before we get them back. But we can't really get textbooks out there until a certain point, and then we get, you know, so, but now the standards are different, those should be very open. One of the things we have talked about this year, we, I don't, and we don't, don't know if you want to do this, but typically we don't, like the standards are fully developed before the committee comes to you and says, "Here they all are, K through 12." Maybe we might do an interim, that would be before they're fully developed, and you wouldn't have standards to look at, but just kind of talk about for the committee to kind of just discuss with the board kind of what their, how their discussions are going, basically. And so you'd get kind of an interim update, and that might at least raise awareness out there, because as you know, it typically has to move pretty fast, they get them developed, you get them, a month later, we're asking you to vote on them, because if we don't, then it puts the textbook process behind. Sean, anything else you can think of?
I was just going to say, you're spot on, Dr. Meadows, so just for the board's information, we actually released a news release in January asking for the public's input, which is our first step for the science and career tech standards, so those public comments are available until March the second, so that that helps inform the committee as they work through creating the standards. There'll be another round of public input later on, once the first draft is developed and we bring it to you for your consideration, so we have that process along, we can always do better as far as the way we communicate and ensure, but textbook's the same kind of thing, they have the ability to not only review them at our library sites, which we've expanded at your request, but also the fact that those are available and are required to have digital access as well. And I guess we'll talk about textbooks later on too, but we're still moving forward in some really exciting ways to make it more of a transparent process. And so we value everything the public can provide us on input, to make sure we have the best vendors possible for our kids.
And I think you got a copy of the press release that went out to all the media about the current.
Yes, we did.
So I would say, you know, if you got networks of people that you think would be interested to forward that, or that email, so that they know it's out there. I mean, that's, we, it's been distributed to literally hundreds of news sites, but y'all know, they're not going to run a story on this, you know, the State Department of Education's looking for input on the science standards, it's just not the kind of thing they necessarily run a stand, story on, unless there's something that comes up. Yeah, so, but I think if you would forward that, that would help us get the word out.
Okay, sounds good. All right, may I have another?
I said your list, I think I recognized your list.
Yesterday, Dr. Chestnut and I were at the SSA District One Legislative Day, and we had a wonderful turnout, we had, we had speaking about new legislators, I mean, these are your freshman ones, and they asked a lot of good questions, we had Representative Alan Baker with us, we had a good gamut of the superintendents and all, and, and from what I'm, you know, when we bring the legislators in, I think that was fabulous, I think we need to back it up, we need to do it earlier than what we're doing right now. And I know somebody said one time, "Well, they're not in town." They'll come, if we invite them, they'll come, we cannot wait till they're almost already in session when timing and they're busy and all that, but that's.
By term into July, you can deal with the next person in charge.
All right, I'll talk to you then. But the other thing is, why not bring in, and each of the SSA District One, Two, and all that, really, they don't coincide, you know, with our board districts, don't ask me why, and the congressional, but it's, you know, it's fairly good, but each of them has a spokesperson for those superintendents, why not bring them in and allow this discussion? Because we need to hear from them as well.
Is there a proposal or a question?
It's a, soon to be a proposal when I finish talking. And so I was just sort of setting the stage. So, I mean, I think we need to, if we're going to actually come up with a plan, that's a drill down plan, we need, and I want to hear, now I know you know your district superintendents well, and I know Stephanie knows her, I need to know your guys and your guys where I know mine, do you see what I'm saying? So hearing from them, we might hear of a commonality thread, we might hear about one, we sort of heard a commonality, but then someone today mentioned transportation, that wasn't mentioned at all yesterday. So those are things about which we need to find the ones that actually have, as I said, the feet on the ground. I applaud, we need to continue the legislative movement, but why not bring in this? And therefore, that's a thought, and anybody want to add to it, Dr. Chestnut?
Well, I agree, you know, I had the opportunity to attend also another district meeting with Tracy West, and then there was, I attended three in all, and to get the opportunity to listen to the superintendents and hear their concerns was most beneficial, you know, it's one thing for us to sit here and make decisions, but I think that it will speak volumes if we would take the time to listen to the people that really have to implement what we vote on. Just like we see the benefits of including the legislators, I think we'll have equally, if not more, benefits to come out of engaging conversations with superintendents beyond the districts we represent.
And one of the things we found out by, they might have brought forth something that was bothersome, and we could, we could set the stage, now many of them are well informed, but some were not, about why. but some were not, about why it is what it is, all right? Sure, you might not like it, but then you do, might need to go talk to your legislator, you know, representatives to get things changed, and you need to be speaking to them ahead of the game, sort of like about which you were speaking, how we're, you know, disconnect type of thing. Just my thought.
I did send out a list that I got from SSA of the superintendent's district.
Yeah, I agree, I thank you.
For our district.
Right.
So if you have, and those happen because the districts are gone districtally, same with School Board Association. So you have that data?
I do. There's nothing quite like listening or talking.
I'm not saying you did, I'm just telling you what I can do to facilitate. Yes, ma'am.
We have SSA representatives, and they were the ones...
Oh, yes, there you are, good girl.
They were the ones to set these up, set these meetings up across the state.
May I?
And, I don't know, probably every group had the same thing to say.
It varies. So Ms. Nigler mentioned that, you know, in one of the meetings, or I think maybe Dr. Chestnut, in one district, transportation came up, and in other districts, another. So, you know, the way we structure those meetings is our members identify their priorities over the course of the year. And then during those legislative district meetings, we ask them, knowing what our statewide priorities are, to tailor that message to their local delegation. And so our superintendents always welcome the opportunity to communicate with y'all. We do bring them down here during the session. And so with Ryan and Ashley, we can explore other ways that we can bring them here more often, so that you can hear from them. I did reach out to Connor and ask if he and I could communicate more about maybe if there's a particular issue that you'd like to hear superintendents discuss. We can plant ahead a little bit, so that we'll have folks here to make sure that the folks who are coming to speak, the superintendents who come to speak are the ones who may be facing that issue or have successes addressing that issue. We don't just want to hear problems. We want y'all to see the solutions that are out there too.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I, obviously, I probably, oh, I don't know, I probably hear from superintendents more than y'all do. I mean, I've talked to two this morning before the meeting. But, and then they need that, those district presidents, I guess three, four, four times a year, they have a retreat, and then at their meetings. And I go to all those meetings. And Chuck, Chuck goes for the whole meeting, and then I go for at least, you know, thirty minutes or so of it at the end, which has been a good collaboration. So I appreciate y'all going to those meetings. I can tell you, going way back, I don't know, I can't speak for, obviously, you know, what's going on in the nineteen sixties or seventies, but in my time as a local superintendent, we never had board members to stay. And I think the first one, when I was the district president and district, it's our district, I don't know, six, I guess, Ms. Bell came to Oxford to meet with one of ours, and people were appalled in a way. They were like, state school board members are not invited to superintendent's meeting.
I didn't invite myself.
But it, no, I invited her.
I was invited.
I was the district president.
And that's why they give us a long...
Yeah, and it was a very good, nice discussion.
Yeah, it was a good one.
So it's good to see that y'all were going to those district meetings. I know it's hard, because some of you overlap with like four SSA districts, and so it's more difficult. You also get a Bart's thing over there, you all also get an invitation to your district AASV meetings. Those are a little different, they're usually at dinner, and it's a bigger crowd, because people always say, "Why are there more people with the board members?" And I say, "Remember, there are five board members for every superintendent in state, so they're bigger, and the superintendents go to those." But, yeah, bringing them in here, I don't know if we could, I'll, Whitney, we'll get with Ryan, because if we bring all twenty of them to one meeting...
No, we were thinking like, just friends, District One, one month, and District Two.
But I, I do think it's helpful to have these meetings. They stopped.
Yeah.
And perhaps it's because you changed your job description, changed jobs. But bottom line is that there was a time when, if Tommy Bice was really, before he became superintendent, he was really good about inviting, and I don't know what his exact title was at that point, maybe he was a district president.
One of us district presidents.
But I remember one, multiple ones, and audit for it and so forth. And actually, even before then, when Doug G. was in the legislature, he would invite, in fact, I had a wreck on the way, not my fault, it was just hydroline. But bottom line is, just as long as we have, this last meeting I couldn't attend because I didn't get, and it wasn't anyone's fault, I'm not placing blame, but if we have sort of a, and sometimes you arrange meetings at the last minute, I had already committed to a morning meeting and afternoon meeting, and I could, I couldn't change them.
And I think they're, they're not on a regular schedule, or they didn't used to be. Like, some of them meet on a Wednesday at lunch, some of them will meet for coffee on Thursdays, but, but that's good, and I shouldn't have used the word appalled. They were shocked.
No, I think they were surprised. I think that's actually more appropriate because...
But it was good.
They had not seen it before, and it just happened, but...
But we'll, but we will work that out. I think that's a good idea, and we'll, we'll work with, with Whitney and the folks over there to try to do that. I think it'd be good.
All right. I'll probably say it for me.
You sure? Other questions?
Can I submit any questions after the deadline?
Absolutely.
Now, directly to Chuck, because I think about things after.
Absolutely.
Because I don't have to answer to them, but you'll get whatever I request.
I doubt that anybody would turn you down.
I know.
I certainly dare not.
I was waiting for the...
Yes, sir, big legacy. I want to...
I get those submitted to me, and I forward them to whomever I can.
But I have to...
You don't have to submit them to me.
Absolutely.
I left it on your own. Other questions?
And we get questions from y'all all the time. We're glad, you know, I love when you, you ask those questions, send them in writing, or if you call. I do want to mention that Ms., Ms. Martin is here. I know y'all haven't seen her, and a couple of you've asked me, "Where is she?" She completely, she's listening now, she's sent me a couple of messages. She completely and absolutely has lost her voice. And so I told her, I said, "Don't come down here, because if you come down, you're gonna want to talk," and she's under strict orders not to be talking. So she's listening, she has sent me several messages while we're, but she is here. And of course, we've got Dr. Shields, our new assistant superintendent with us today, and Dr. Hall's been with us part of the day, and Shanthea Washington, of course, is with us all the time. We've got some folks on the road today too, and we, they've had CNI meetings, I think they're finished, because they're all here now, and they are, they are more bleary-eyed, I promise you, than they look like they are back there smiling.
Yeah, right.
Other board questions before Ms. Nigler tries to read her out? Yes, ma'am, Dr. Chestnut.
It appears that there's still maybe confusion about Black History in CRT. What can we do to raise awareness of what CRT is or is not? To prevent the future confusion that I'm hearing, I've gotten emails, I've watched the news of different situations concerning the celebration of Black History Month. People are afraid that they are in violation of this, that, and the other, or, you know, I'm sure everybody got the, I don't know, it was an email or whatever, news break this morning, and I'm sure Dr. Richardson and Ms. McCray know even more about what's taking place in Tuscaloosa. Not to mention those areas that we may or may not be aware of, but it just seems to be repeatedly a question about what is and what isn't. I know that's the big elephant in the room, but at some point, we need to bring some clarity so that we don't deal with these same issues over and over again.
May I add to that? Years prior to the issue about critical race theory, there have been Black History celebrations in all of our districts. However, as you said, with what was in the news this morning with Tuscaloosa, we're trying to relate to that. People are confused. What we've done for years, they're afraid to do now. So I agree, I'm just supporting what you're saying. Something needs to be done. I mean, when I was in school, you know, at one point, it wasn't a month, it was a week. But now you have the month-long celebrations, but things are being questioned at this point. So I don't know how we can clarify that people understand. I don't know, I don't know the answer. But I do know that, you know, the critical race theory debate that we went through last year has caused problems that did not exist at one time.
Yes, ma'am. So I appreciate what you just said, you don't know, because I, how to, because I don't know how to address it either. So I will tell you, we, I've read of, and I'm sure y'all sent to, two issues, the one in Tuscaloosa, which I've had several reporters, all the reporters this morning ask me about. But at the time, as of this morning, all I had seen is the news story. I am in contact today after the meeting to talk to the superintendent in Tuscaloosa County, but obviously, I'm here now. So we'll, we'll help with that situation as best we can. And there was another one, as y'all know, a school district canceled a program. But I haven't, like, the district's not reached out to us, so we don't know all the ins and outs of why they canceled the program, and no parent, as far as I know, no parents have reached out to us. And I'm not going to say no parent has called somebody to the department. I, you know, I don't have any emails or calls from a parent. I'm not, by the way, for anybody out there listening, I'm not soliciting those. But it is, obviously, we've had some struggles. I would say this, though, just, I know for a fact that there are literally hundreds of Black History programs going on this month, and we've only known of two instances. Now, as you pointed out, Dr. Chestnut, Dr. Richardson, there may be others. So we need to look at that. You know, specifically, I was asked this morning, is there a state rule against teaching any Black history before nineteen seventy? I don't know where that came from, but it was an easy answer. I said, "No." There obviously is not a state rule, because most of Black history, as, as most of all history, happened before nineteen seventy, so we can't, obviously don't have a rule like that. But somebody, one of the news reporters asked me that, so obviously, they ask it from some context that I don't know, and I need to get, to get that context. But we have, we, we have...
That was, that was, that was mentioned in the article that was shared this morning.
Okay.
So you might want to go to that first and then...
I haven't seen the article yet. Thank you.
But I remember reading that.
I'll go back and look for it. I, you know, one of the things we, now, on our website, you will see a link, we're using, we're pushing out materials for teachers, and they are all, I'm not going to say everybody's in, you know, agreement, everything, but they're all from the National Art Gallery, the Smithsonian Institution, I mean, they're, and their lesson plans, there are, they're across the board, their art, their history, their music, their science. So I know there's a lot of resources out there. But, but I, to your point, it's, there's not a way for us to make a list of things that are not acceptable. And I know you're not asking that, but I think that means there will always been big questions about, well, is this, this or this? I hate to see people who are scared to go forward with their plans and then just cancel the program. And so we would be willing, very willing, to work with superintendents about this or that program. And we'll say one other thing that's, that might get a little too far down. We've got to be really careful. So in some situations, we've had, somebody is invited to speak, and it's not, not necessarily this month, but they, but we've had some other issues where people have been invited in to speak, to say a school assembly. And then the, the cause of something that person had tweeted, or something, or even not something they tweeted, but they liked somebody else's tweet. And this is not necessarily just Black History, but we've had this, um, two or three incidences in the last couple of years, and then the school district goes back and out of an abundance of caution cancels the presentation, because they are, you know, they're afraid that they're going to go too far down. And I don't know a way other than to kind of, we're gonna have to walk that path. And again, those, the ones I'm thinking of, were not around Black History, but they were issues that are pretty similar to one of the ones that happened in the news, you know, where they, they canceled an author, I think. And I don't know the author, I don't know the book, and I'm not talking to the superintendent, so I shouldn't be in on it, let them. But I would say, we are glad to help superintendents, you know, kind of plan programs. There's plenty of really good history and culture and science out there. So just saying, "Well, I'm afraid I'm gonna make people mad, so I'm not gonna do anything" is not the answer.
And I think what happened in reference to that situation, one district canceled, and another district was willing to go along with the author, because things that had come out about not having a contract and all those things were proven not to be true. However, when the other system now is saying they're willing to bring the author in, family members that he has is discouraged from the tone they've gotten in the state, because things were put out that were not true about them.
Well, Dr. Chestnut, we'll keep working on it. But, but I, your point's well made. It is, and Dr. Richardson did mention to me the other situation already today, and Ms. McCray did at lunch, that, that we need to...
And I think that's just miscommunication, what I'm hearing from, from the emails that we've gotten. I think people just need to talk.
We did have an issue last year, was not, I mean, I think you're right, it's, I don't know if there's more, or there's a little more attention to it this year, but we did have an issue last year that we dealt with, and we were able to help the district and some local, local NAACP actually, to resolve the situation, and it never made the press. So we will work on it.
Other questions? Wait, let me give everybody else a chance now.
Okay. One thing I want to do, was to thank Mr. Markham and Ms. Harris. They're working on providing for us the data that will show how many teachers we've been able to add to the profession by doing the negative one SEM, and we'll be able to present that next month at the work session. Just want everybody to be informed and just seeing how, what we've done, if it's brought the seven hundred teachers that we thought we were going to get, or what, what has it done? Thank you all.
Other questions? Who's last?
I have a question, babe, on number four. I have a little story to tell you, but it's moving on.
So you don't have a question now?
Once, again, here I go, it's not a request, I mean, it's not a question, but having listened to what was said today, and I know we have the Alabama Achieve Strategic Plan, but that's the big umbrella plan. I would like to be at March or April, where we actually look at things, figure out how we need to drill down, what are the questions, what will be the plan, so that it is known that we're just not just kicking the, I never know my metaphor, it's kicking, what is it? The can down, the wherever it goes? But, you know what I mean? I mean, but I think from listening to other people during lunch, and, and from our legislators that have come, it's possible we're not communicating again well enough for it to lessen, you know, for them to be heard, but I do believe we're not drilling down quite enough for the knowledge to, that we are dropping the ball on the schools that are really, truly struggling. So that's my...
Clarify your analysis of drilling down.
I did, when I talked about it, I did.
I think she saw, she talked to our staff.
So, and I just, I, you know, I think not later, but we, the sooner the better, that we need to honestly, and one of the things I said earlier, we need to look at our warts. Because if we don't look at our warts, we can't put on our clear seal or whatever, we cannot fix it, but we got to fix what's going wrong, because we're not doing the right thing for our kids.
Are you advocating, as someone said earlier, a program to deal with schools that we determine are failed schools, or what are you advocating?
Not a program, I just want to come...
Or a process?
Yes. But I don't want a, you know, a one plan fits all, I just think we need to, I just think we need to talk, and have the time to talk, and figure out where we need to go.
So are you suggesting we have more than one meeting a month?
No.
Let me, I think...
I'm trying to fit what you're asking into what we're doing.
Well, maybe we don't need to be spending so much talking about resolution. I don't know. I'm just saying, this is, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
If this isn't the most important, critical discussion, then we're dropping the ball. To me, this is like the number one issue about which we need to be specific.
And that's what I've been saying for months.
You have, you have, and you have that. I just think, let's bring it up.
Well, I think part, there are two things.
I'm sorry, what?
No, no, I think there are two issues there. Well, I want to say three. So one, in talking with those gentlemen, and I, you know, one of the things that Leader Daniels and I, as he mentioned, we went to New York together, this trip, and it was a great trip, and visited Harlem Children's School. And we'll be, coming back from that, and that was right before the pandemic, and we have implemented some things from that trip. It's good, and I hope some of you get to go. They obviously cut out all trips for a couple of years, but they are starting to take visitors again. It is very hard to get in, because they take, they have so many requests, they only take so many... they only take so many visitors a year. But we had a very good trip. We went out in December of 2019. But what, when he said a, a plan two, I know what he's talking about is it's not just K-12. And you know, he said that. It's not, it's the, because what we saw there was, what, what they were doing in the school day is what we're doing in the school day. It was, but they were doing, they're doing before school, they're doing after school, they're doing weekends school, they have in-school clinics, they have in-school mental health. So it's all of this other two that is, that is a part of a comprehensive plan that's really beyond us. So that's one. And I know that's his vision, and I share that, we share that vision with him, but that obviously is a lot of, that's a lot of planning. That's what we're doing in our school improvement plans now, though. We're trying, as you know, to reach out, and I know Dr. Shields talked a couple of months ago about how we're trying to do more, it's not just, just academics, it's about how do we go in and look at the whole, not just the whole school, whole school community, and what does the school community need? And how do we help them get those services? So, so that's new work that was only been going on for a couple of years, but that's where we're headed. So one is that discussion. And then two, I think, the tactical plans, like the boots-on-the-ground pieces of that that Dr. Richardson's been talking about. My, my work's tactical. So it's not just strategic, you know, strategic plan is overarching where you're going. Tactical plans are the steps to get there. And the steps are there, and y'all know that. We've got great staff, they're doing, but pulling all of those pieces together so people see it and understand it, I think is more difficult. So we're trying to work on that, and that could be what we would do. I heard, again, Leader Daniels this morning talk about when he was teaching elementary school, he talked about RTI. And we're still doing that work, we've actually expanded it now. That's what MTSS is. And so y'all heard the presentation, I think in December on, or last fall, on MTSS, Multiterm Systems Support, and all that's going on with that. So here's, I think, part of it, the issue with the communication is we actually have so many plans and so many things going on because we also have a huge workforce plan. It's like, everybody, this is what I, not from y'all, but this is the, the thing that I hear from legislators and people outside, business people some, put all that on one page. But it doesn't all fit on one page because it's so comprehensive. So when we boil it down to one page, they're like, well, this is not enough. Well, it's not enough because you asked us to fit it on one page, but there's actually so much more. Maybe, and I don't wanna, maybe, you said maybe sooner the better, but what I may need to do is get with all those folks sitting on the back wall and bring all of them, because we bring MTSS to the table one month, we brought Dr. Shields to the table one month, Dr. Anderson, we were already gonna try to get her up here to do a whole numeracy math update in March. Bonnie Short has come and done an update in the last six months. But maybe we need to get all of them sitting up here with y'all and talk about how all the pieces fit together. And Dr. Chestnut, as, we, we've had this conversation about, it's not, not her words, but I think some of her sentiment, how do we get that out to the people who live in Cherokee County or Perry County? That they, there is so much going on, but, but it's so hard to communicate to everybody, even the teachers, even our teachers in the field. We have teachers teaching third, fourth grade. I'm gonna pick on Dr. Karen Anderson back there for just a minute. She sent me a beautiful chart this morning where they have polled through our, I mean, that's new. She's, y'all know, she's new with us this year. We're rolling out all these math supports and thankful for the money to do it. But when they polled teachers, what came up number one on their needs was they have, they know what the standards are, but they need help knowing how to teach them. They don't know how to teach the standards. So that's professional development. So you talk about the warts, I mean, that was the number one response from teachers. We need guidance on how to teach the standards. That has traditionally been not a State Department function, that's been a local school function. When I was a local superintendent, that was my job to make sure my teachers knew how to teach the standards. I'm not throwing any superintendents or principals under the bus, but if that's the number one thing we're hearing from teachers, then we gotta make sure. And that numeracy task force, they're meeting, 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 because that's one of their charges, is to roll out some sort of PD that would be somewhat equivalent to letters for, and, and they're having a hard time identifying something. But they're doing that. So I hear what you're saying, it's, it rattles around in my brain all the time because, as y'all know, I mean, I, again, see people right there sitting, they're doing amazing work, and they're doing more than, than they should be able to even do, and they're teams. And yet, when you go to a school and you meet with a teacher, that it's not gotten from the State Department to that teacher, much less to a parent. That's the, that's the frustration. How do we get it there? So let me work on it. Let me work on getting, I think we may take our work session and pull all of them to the table at one time. Now, that may be a little overwhelming, but it may be the way to see how the pieces fit together, too.
To start with reading and all the reading. For example, Ms. Short shared with Ms. Ziegler and I a document that she was looking at for reading. Well, everyone who's dealing with reading, if we could do it like that. And then, you know, there are other areas, because she showed us how they're trying to go through the different, instead of everybody at the table. I think if we look per area, then the weakness is there. And then go, and then we got the math. That's just my recommendation, but we see something differently.
But I think Dr. Richardson and I have experienced where we've actually met twice a month. Remember those days when we would?
Well, right, but I'm.
But I'm, I'm not saying go back necessarily. But in, in its place, when Ed Richardson was in from, and Ed was actually my junior high school principal, so I felt like I could talk to him. But we, we came up with the change to the administrative code. And the administrative code was, the purpose of it was to, of the retreat. It was to set up retreats that we didn't have in place for the purpose of the retreats, not to say we shouldn't do anything else, but that was part of the reason is because it was obvious that the board, and he saw it from a standpoint, the board needed to know more about what was going on in the field. And so often, that, going back to the communication part of it, that's a, that's a deficiency that, I don't care which organization you happen to be a part of, it's everywhere. But, but it's worth taking that time. I know we did that more with the two-year college system when we would have just a spontaneous retreat. But it's really very important, since we only oversee K-12 now, to start doing that on a regular basis. We don't have to be restricted by two different retreats, but I think it would be helpful.
And we'll look at, so we'll look at, starting with reading, because they're already doing that work. We do want to update you on math soon. So let me, I'm gonna give you a perfect example, though. And I didn't want to break this, I've talked to, I've not talked to the two gentlemen who were with us today, because they're not, you know, the heads of the budget committees, but they're both still on the budget committee. So, as you know, there's, a provision was put into the budget in about 2015 that we're still living with that forbids anybody in ARI from working outside grades K-3. One of them, or maybe both of them, I know one of them, I don't remember which, brought up that one of the things they're hearing from the field, from teachers, is middle school, middle school, middle school. Middle school reading specifically, one of them said. Well, ARI, specifically by law, cannot work in middle school reading. So we've got a workaround, those ladies? We've got a workaround where we're hiring four middle school literacy specialists, not through ARI, but to do that. But one of the things that I'm, you know, hoping the legislature will do is change that language in the budget to allow ARI folks to work with fourth grade teachers, because it just makes sense that we would do that. Now, the Literacy Act actually says that a school has to provide literacy support for students who are promoted to fourth grade and not, but they didn't, you know, they're promoted for some reason, but not maybe quite ready. Or they're retained one year and then they get promoted anyway, because remember, you don't do double retention. So when that retention piece picks in, picks up, schools are required to provide those services in fourth grade. And yet, another law says, but ARI cannot do it. So see, we need that, that's a, that's a fix that the legislature can help us with. And I've, I've already been in discussions, and y'all can talk to them, please, too. Say, one of the things you could do, simple, just take that language out so that ARI can work with middle school students. Now, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make ARI spread too thin, but we do wanna open those connections up. But as I said, we're doing workarounds, but that's a piece, you know, and if we had not already been one o'clock or so going to lunch, I would have brought that up. But I know we need to get out of here. But, but we are doing those pieces, because I bet the two of them didn't know, because y'all didn't know, that we're working a way, you know, we're finding a way to meet that middle school need. Won't be as robust as what we do in your K-3, because we don't have the funding for it. But, but those are pieces, I think, that you're, the conversations you and I have had outside the board meeting, that you wanna see all of that together and how it fits together. And so, it's, well, it's, it is heard, and we're working on it, I promise you.
But Dr. Mackey, you know, as we move forward, if we could drill it on down to what's happening with after-school programs and how after-school programs support what we're doing. And I'm not advocating for additional meetings from the board, but it's important enough for me to take the time to come.
Sure.
So if you don't mind, let me know when you meet.
And thank you for joining in on the math, because you've been hanging in there.
That's been wonderful. In fact, we met, I can't keep up with my dates, I think it was last Monday.
It was this week, I think, yeah.
Yes, and to hear Dr. Anderson talk about how she and Ms. Short and other departments are coming together, planning for, I think, the mega conference and how the professional development is seamless. We hear and know that the work is taking place, but if no one beyond these walls can identify or even see what's happening, it does give the appearance that there is no plan. And so I think if we continue, just as Dr. Richardson has suggested and so many others, if we continue to move forward and be intentional about sharing the vision and what happens if this doesn't work, this is the plan of action that will take place. And so, all things work together for the good. I appreciated what they said, it was motivation to me. I don't know about anybody else, so I'm, I'm just glad that we're able to, as Ms. Ziegler put it, talk about those things that really matter.
Right. Yeah, and these two gentlemen are very engaged with their local superintendents on a day-to-day basis, very engaged with their, and board members. I'm gonna jump to item four, because I know Ms., Ms. McCray has a, has a question on item four.
Any other questions? I'm trying to be logical and orderly. Item four, Dr. Mackey.
Thank you, sir. So on four, one, you have a confidential package. Your own assembly has now been unthought of at your assembly. Yeah, come on up. Come on up. Did you have this? This, or these have not been handed out to everybody else, maybe only I have one?
I have one in my notebook.
You should have this. Okay, here's mine.
No, we have one.
Okay, it's on assembly two. So let me remind you of the rules, okay? We have a teacher with us, he's been patient all day and has done this work. So let me, let me remind you the rules. This is very, this is textbook and where we are and where we do it. So one, we're gonna not break the rules, but slightly bend them down. My lawyer is over here. We're also missing Jason today, but James is with us, and he's an excellent parleyman. So the textbook law used to say that the contents of this envelope could not be released to anyone other than you until after the governor had signed the contracts. The new textbook law says the contents of this envelope could not be released to the public until after you vote on the contents of the envelope. Okay? So we still are embargoed today that we cannot mention textbook comments. They are gonna go through the process that the textbook committee just went through to reevaluate K-3 textbooks. If you remember last year, the textbook committee, you rec, you approved all the textbooks for LA with the exception of K-3, which we pulled at your request because there was only one vendor recommending. And there was only one vendor because there were two vendors that had met qualifications, but one of them did not qualify because of the quint date in their book, and you could not be older than a certain number of years, three, I think. That, so now we re-vetted that. It went through two processes. I'm gonna let them, I'm just gonna set them up. But we did let the tech, the literacy task force first take a shot at all the vendors who submitted. So there were two, two levels. The literacy task force looked at this for days. Mrs. Ziegler was on that, in that process, though she was not able to go to all the meetings because they overlapped the state board meeting, and she missed some of them. But they looked purely at whether the textbooks submitted met all the requirements of the Alabama Literacy Act. Now, it's a high bar. Some of the vendors may have met eight out of nine, but if they did not meet all nine, the literacy task force rejected them. The textbook committee then took the reviews already done by the literacy task force, and they vetted them for appropriateness to the textbook law. And so you're gonna see and hear the, the ones that are left. Like, without mentioning the names of them, there are very few of them. There's not one this year, but it is a small number. So with that setup, thank you for your work on this. You've done this twice.
I feel very experienced now.
Yeah, and you might get a job at the State Department working on textbooks someday if you keep coming back. So, Mr. Stevens, why don't I turn it over to you, and then you, you, however y'all wanna do it, if you wanna introduce Mr. Bayless? I think I said it right? Is that right?
It's like rebellious without the re.
Bayless, Bayless, sorry.
Good afternoon, Sean Stevens from Instructional Services. I'm here, our, our textbook administrator, Dr. Jones, is, is out sick, but we're excited to share with you a little bit about the process that we, that our committees went through. We, we took your challenge, we continue to take the challenge that you give us each time and the feedback that you provide us in order to provide, to, to have a, the most transparent process as possible. I'm gonna let Kevin talk about the process, and then each of you have your, your results in, in your packets, and we can go from there. But he's done such an excellent job, and I will say this, I wanna thank the, the entire committee, because it was a commitment for, for each of them to come back and be part of that, be part of that process. And I got to join them many, many times and really get to hear the candid conversations about the expectations that we have for our students and the expectations that we have for the materials that teachers are using every day. So, Kevin.
So, thank you again for letting me come and speak to y'all, share our work. I agree with Sean, the committee that came back was dedicated even more so having the second opportunity to be able to provide quality resources for our teachers. So we put together a little show. The State Textbook Committee recalled everybody to see who would still be available. We had a total of 23 members for K-3, 14 members that were for elementary, for secondary, for at-large, and two higher education, and then nine governor appointees. The literacy task force, like Dr. Mackey said, reviewed the materials prior to us receiving them and for the ones that are the comprehensive. So if it was gonna be a comprehensive or core program, then they had to look at those first, and then we worked off of those lists. I'm not gonna read all of those to you, but those are all of the different publishing companies that submitted, that we reviewed. Some of them were for the core comprehensive programs, while others were just for supplementary programs. The official bid categories for publishers defined, that's an explanation on how they were able to bid and get in, I don't wanna say to run, but have their names submitted for a choice in the supplementary textbooks as well. So the color rating that's up there is a little different than what you see before you, and that's okay. and that's okay. Last time, when we did the color coding, the tier two, even though they were acceptable, um, had a yellow color on them and visually it looked like they were not acceptable. So we changed the colors a little bit. We have blue for tier one, tier two is a light green, and then you have the yellow for the ones that we did not recommend for, um, adoption. So for the review, we reviewed all documented evidence before deciding on ratings. That included online resources, supplemental resources, any research findings related to the studies to make sure they were adequate. Um, we looked at high-quality evidence as well as evidence of low quality. So regardless of what was submitted, we gave everybody an equal opportunity and rated them all in all the resources that came along. So our definitions of ratings in all categories, there's four parts to the rubric. And we could score it IE or one through four on parts two through four. Four, obviously, would be exceeds expectations. Three would be meets expectations, two does not, and then IE was used on rubrics where, for example, it might be a supplementary material, so it wouldn't have all the same things that the other programs have, so it would be insufficient evidence. On the cover of each sheet, we put the title of the program, the publishing company, the grade levels or courses it related to, and then they were all copyrighted, so we just put that on there and the reminder of how we select them. And then every reviewer had to sign off on their recommendations and their ratings. Section one was a list of non-negotiables, those are things such as the, um, printed, the copyright being on time, um, and that had to be answered by every one of the companies before we were able to rate them. Section two applied to core programs only, and that's where we made sure that that new course of study was perfectly aligned to meet all the need, all the needs of teachers and our students. Um, section three looked at the practicality of the application. So sometimes you can have a program that looks fabulous, but then when you think about how does it implement the classroom, maybe it doesn't work so well. Section four were additional criteria that related to the science of reading to make sure it was of superior quality and would be effective for what we needed it to do. And then that all led to the final evaluation. This is the section where we put all of the scores. Again, that section one was just yes or no. If it was supplemental, it does not have a score for section two, because it, a lot of those programs are intervention programs and not necessarily standards-based. Section four was only required for those that we were looking at for core programs and not the supplementary piece. And then we averaged all those percentages together and that scored whether or not an item was tier one, two, or three, or four. Uh, we came back for the second time on December fifth, um, and we were working with Dr. Jones, who was amazing throughout this entire process. Um, publishers presented to us over the next two days virtually, which sped up the progress we were able to make. And then there's an overview of the timeline since then, you can see it was a pretty fast turnaround. Uh, we had two weeks where we had committee sessions here where we reviewed the material and were able to work. And then we turned in all of our ratings at, like, January nineteenth session. And then here we are today, where you have yours, and hopefully by March ninth, we'll have an official decision. The way the scores, again, talk about the color change, we kept them in a Google document to make sure everything was lined up and nothing was left blank. And if you have any questions or comments, Mr. Sean Stevens. Amazing inter questions.
Just a reminder of what Dr. Mackey said, that one of our non-negotiables, you know, of course, was that they must meet the science of reading if it was a comprehensive, if it's submitted for comprehensive, and only those that met that science of reading made it to the next step of the process. And so, you have in your packets this confidential, uh, the score sheets and the recommendations of the committee.
So I would invite, it's really hard to have a discussion when you can't, you know, have much of a discussion. But here's the situation that you as a board are in. You, you have three options before you, as you did last year. Um, one is to approve the list. Remember that textbook committee list comes to you not as a recommendation from the superintendent, but from the textbook committee. So it's a recommendation directly from them. I'm not allowed by law, like, if I wanted to go in and mark this up and make changes, there are a lot of things I mark up and make changes, but this is not one of them, because textbook committee recommends to the board. So it's approve their recommendation, you can turn down their recommendation, or you can, uh, you cannot act on their recommendation. You actually do have a fourth option, and that is you can change their rec, you can change it before you vote on it, you can't change the recommendation, obviously, but you, you technically can make changes to it. As y'all know, that gets a little bit dangerous legally, because you're gonna have to, you know, if the board makes changes and anything comes up, it'll be, well, why did you make changes, why didn't you follow the, you know, your two, you have two committees of experts. So just caution us on that. I have been asked by superintendents, not a lot, but a few, to please get this before a board vote in March, so that they can, because, remember, that means the, the contracts go to the vendors, they have to be signed by the vendors, and then they come back and they have to go through the governor's office. It usually takes four weeks to do that, sometimes six weeks. And so if they are going to purchase for this fall, they're, you know, like, if we didn't bring it to a vote until May, then they would not be getting them an option to purchase books to July. So the sooner the better. Ms. Short, I'm not, I'm gonna, not wanna embarrass you, but I'm, I'm gonna mess this up, so if you know off the top of your head, you may have to fix it for me. More than half the districts have already purchased K three, uh, material based on, because last year, when we, we pushed it back to the districts and said they could make district-level decisions, more than half of them have already purchased. And she even has a list of, like, which vendors, you know, which ones purchased this versus this versus this. We have about, if I remembered right, it's twenty-one percent of districts have not purchased anything, they are waiting on this, you know, waiting on this decision to make their purchase. Plus, only one district, so I can't say that's a big, a lot, but I have had one superintendent to tell me that they are probably going to change. Like, they bought one, they've been using it for a year and they're dissatisfied, and, um, they're actually looking at maybe changing based on what comes out of this, this vote. The, if the board rejects the list, then remember that means that none of the, if you reject it, they cannot use any materials on here with state textbook money. They cannot use state textbook money to purchase any of these materials if you reject it. If you okay it, obviously they can. If you don't act on it, then it, it becomes a local board issue and they have to have a local committee, textbook committee, to, to go through the process themselves. I do appreciate Mr. Bayless, your, your committee, and also the literacy task force. They, they have worked really hard on getting this together and, and going through. And I don't know, it's, I'm glad to ask your questions, I know they're glad to ask your questions. It's a little bit difficult when you don't have a, when we can't mention the vendors, but if it's a question about process or, you know, content, we can talk about it a little bit if you want to.
There is a process, just, I'm saying something out loud, which I know to be true, so tell me if something's changed, that there is a process where the locals, once they've made a selection, if there are any materials in the textbook that they find, uh, are not appropriate for their culture, environment, in their school, in their system, that, those materials can be redacted from the textbook, and they have local control of that when they do, when they go through and review, um, the materials, is that correct?
I think that local adoption process allows each of them to have that local control. You know, they're the ones who are making the decisions from the list that is approved, that, you know, they get to choose which one is the best fit for their district, and then they work directly with the publishers to address any issues that may be regard to content or, like I said, community norms, whatever those, um, things could be.
Right, cuz I know all of us are contacted from time to time about a book, for whatever reason, you know? I was contacted about, uh, uh, an advanced placement book that was being used in a high school. Well, that's a college-level book. It has material that, you know, might not normally be in a K-12 classroom. So, um, so I just am reiterating the fact that sometimes there are things and materials that locals may not want necessarily, and that is their option to have that removed.
And the local teacher, classroom teachers' decision on, on how they use their materials within their classroom.
And I can only speak from the local adoption process that I run where I'm from, but we go through the same process that are up here, it's up here, use the same exact forms, everything, so that way our teachers have the input. So I may help with this, but when I'm back home, I just, they go through the process, I don't mark it up or do anything with it. So that way our teachers, cuz there's so many different, different districts, they have an opportunity to have input based on communities they serve. Um, so I can speak from my district, and I would assume it's that way at several other locations.
Okay, that's great.
And take it, look at it, again, it's on your assembly, um, and call, you know, you're welcome to call me, obviously, over the next month, call Mr. Stevens. Dr. Jones is out for a few weeks, she had some, had a procedure, she's, she's gonna be fine, but she needs to be resting. Um, so she was, she was, you know, apologetic she couldn't be here today. Think she may be back for a March meeting, I'm not certain. But when we leave today, here's what I'm gonna, our, my plan is gonna be that we would put this on the March agenda for a vote. I would, um, now you'll know, and I listen to my media friends out there, y'all know, I've never polled you, are you voting for or against something? I've never once asked a board member that. But I will ask you, uh, in the next month, whether you wanna keep it on the agenda or not, because if the majority say, I'm not comfortable yet moving forward, then I need to know that. But I won't be asking you if you're for or against the list, but are you, are you comfortable with moving it toward a vote, or do you need more time to discuss? But I would encourage you, talk to your superintendents before we have those discussions, because many of them are anxious about getting this list approved, or some list approved. And I don't think we can, I mean, I, I don't think we can say enough thank you to Mr. Bayless and to Ms. Ziegler and all the people that they represented, Dr. Stevens, cuz I mean, they, this is not, we're gonna get together and have coffee and cookies and we'll just rubber stamp everything. I mean, they've taken those things apart and going through them and trying to make sure our children have the very best materials to learn how to read. I cannot say that in either one of these series, any of the series in here, that every story is gonna meet every person's personal criteria. But to teach children to learn to read, I can promise you that I would stack my reputation on what these two committees have done, because they're good people, have worked really hard. We're all trying to get to it.
Belinda, you have a question?
Yes. Well, it's a situation, really, I've been contacted by some people from my district who ordered books and materials, and now they don't like it. They don't like, especially some of the supplementary materials that came in that were not in the kit, that they did not have any way of knowing or seeing when the local committee was making this decision. Okay, so now they're saying to me, we want to see these books and the supplementary materials. And I've told them that, uh, UNA is a designated site, but what they're saying to me is, UNA has all kinds of samples. I wanna know which ones are approved by the state textbook committee and the literacy task force, because I don't wanna waste my time looking through materials that are not gonna, we're not gonna be able to choose from. They have a very good point. But what do I, 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 what do I say? It's a secret and I can't tell you.
So we cannot tell them.
And they're saying, what, are you hiding something from us? Are you trying to push something on us that we might not want? And, and I'm saying, no, I just don't wanna go to jail. So how do we handle that?
So I think nine, nine vendors, I think, submitted, and you're, you're gonna have a much shorter list than nine.
Can you send a copy of what the law says so that when she can share that? Then she can share that in an email, that way it would be an easy way to.
They want me to look at it and, and I will, and, and I will, when, when I can talk about it.
Well, I think one thing is, to go back to that last point, the quicker we can vote, the quicker we can make it public. So if we can, um, agree to vote on March nine, then we would, if, it could be public the afternoon of March the ninth, and they'll know which vendors are, you know, on the acceptable list.
But they wanna tell me if there's something we're not gonna like, we don't want you to vote. So that puts me in a spot.
It does.
And if I don't, I can vote yes or no, but I can't say, hey, looks people in my district didn't like this company, so I vote no on it, but yes on everything else. I can't do that.
I might comment.
Yes.
That local control is the final decision.
Yes.
If they bought something they didn't like, they perhaps should pay more attention to their process, because one of the things the law provides is local control. Local control doesn't override local ineptness.
But it also, it also goes back to what you had to deal with during your campaign, where there's a great misunderstanding that she voted for something, her name is, is listed as one, so it's kind of that option where it puts you in a really strange situation where you have to explain it after the fact.
And last time, when they voted for this particular book, they hadn't had a chance to view the supplementary material, so they were voting blindly, and it was the supplementary material. The textbook committee, the local textbook committee. So they, they voted blindly and then the stuff.
They didn't have a chance to look at the supplementary material?
The supplementary material was not in the kit. I went down there and went through it myself, and, and it was not in the original kit. So I don't understand that.
No, that's something we could, of course, deal with, but.
I wouldn't purchase.
They don't have to use supplementary material, obviously, if they don't want to. They, if, so if they found that the primer was not objectionable, but some supplementary materials were, they don't have to use supplementary materials, that's, I know. We'd be glad to talk, don't mention, obviously, you're not gonna mention the district. But you did not, but if you want to have us, us have a conversation with you and the district, that we could do that aside, we'd be glad to. I mean, there is, you know, of the first list that we looked at, I won't say this list, but the first list we looked at, there was one vendor that we, we got, we, not a lot of complaints, but we did get some complaints about their materials months after the process was over. And, um, we actually have worked with that vendor. I've had a personal conversation with the CEO of that company, and we have produced for the districts some, some workarounds. I mean, cuz there's, if they, if it's a particular, so if there's a, you know, they're in a whole, all grade three, and there's one story that they don't feel like's appropriate, they can skip that story. What we tell them is they have to make sure that the skills, so there may be a certain set of literacy skills taught in that story, they have to find another way to make sure those skills are taught. But, um, to be just blunt about it, although I promise you, when I was an elementary school principal, we dealt with the same thing, in English Language Arts. I had a, we had a series, and some of my teachers felt like, and it was fourth grade, and I remember particularly, they just felt like these, there were a couple of stories that were not appropriate for their children. And we pulled those stories out and we worked around it. But we're living in a different age, it didn't make sense media or something, there wasn't such thing as social media. But, um, but teachers, I say that to say, teachers have been doing this forever, that they have to work things out, but, but we do, you know, it's, and I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to answer the best I can, but it's not a direct answer.
What, sometimes, sometimes what our parents think that teachers are teaching the textbook, and that's not it.
Teachers are teaching concepts and skills. So, you use the textbook as a resource, not as the teaching document. It, it's sometimes hard for parents to understand.
Yeah, and we...
And teachers.
I'm sorry, I'm late.
And teachers, too.
We did, and we actually, at least one of the complaints we had came from, so the, the primer went home, and it actually was a story that the teacher was not using, but the parent flipped through the whole book, and they didn't know where the teacher's not even using this story, but it was in the book, they didn't have a way to actually extract it from the book, which goes back, I think, to Ms. McCray's question about, you know, you can, you can skip a story, but you cannot extract that material if it's all tied together. Now, some of these materials come in separate little booklets and things, too, there's lots of different ways now, but, um...
To clarify, I experienced when we adopted the last time, we did not adopt K-3. And I had two systems, one, the superintendent, used to be in my system, took a job in another one, and he was very unhappy, because they adopted the textbook on their own, with their own textbook committee, and he didn't like it. And I said, "Really? You bought a car, you didn't drive it before you bought it?"
There you go.
And the old adage, let the buyer be here, where? And if you've got supplemental material, and you're a buyer, and the school system's a purchaser, and you don't request that supplemental material in order to examine it, that is a responsibility that's a local school system. And that's why we have certain parameters we adopt, and the school systems don't necessarily adopt what we approve, they have to make a choice after that. And my answer to that superintendent was, apparently, you need to revitalize and reexamine how your textbook committee is functioning, because we deal with it on a state level, but each of us as superintendents dealt with that ourselves, and sometimes you get very busy, and these committees kind of quasi-function and adopt stuff, and then they don't like it. But we spent money, they spent money in this school system and bought the material, and you can throw it away, or whatever you want to, but you can't fix something that people decide on, and then you talk about supplemental material, if they hadn't seen it, they should ask the, before they spend their money, ask for it, in my opinion. Am I correct, Dr. Mackey? Correct me now.
Now, you can ask for it. You certainly can ask for it. To see all the material you're purchasing, that's, I'm surprised to hear that, but I'm not, I believe you're judgment, you know, accurately, that they didn't get it, but I don't know if...
Certainly, we never questioned, I only questioned the procedure that was followed by the people who were saying they didn't get to see it. They didn't get to see it. The get to is the criteria that I have questions about.
If you wouldn't look, and the box wasn't there, the box of supplemental materials wasn't there, but, but I think they can get it. Um, I will not speak for them, but we have, um, y'all, y'all know that the vast majority of our textbooks in the state are ordered through Publishers Warehouse, because we're really good about, um, does I say that right? Yeah. So, there, so, on the, we're one of the few states that fortunately has a single clearing house for textbooks, and we have two people back there, Patrick and Lisa are here, that represent them, and I think that, I'm gonna look at y'all and say, they should be able to request all the materials to review before they make a decision, that's typical.
That, that is correct, and so most of the publishers create sample boxes during adoptions, so, and, and that's what it is, is a sample box, so it'll have a sampling, but they can request to get all of the materials digitally, so they can review them that way.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So, that makes sense, and they got the sample box, but there is a way to see all the materials.
Part of the purchasing process, the local school system's buying stuff. I don't, I'd be glad to go visit that superintendent as a former, as a former superintendent. All right. Any more questions on item four? Hearing none. Item five is a resolution.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you for, thank you. Thank you for recognizing the District Council. We can also protect my phone on behalf of both of those, because I happen to be, represent both of those, as a former teacher and counselor. Thank you for recognizing those, but I know Dr. Paul feels the same way.
Item five and item six are resolutions. Item seven and eight are just reiterating something that's already been on the agenda, and is, will be up for adoption in April?
Final adoption in March.
March.
In March. So, if there's any more questions about, we spent a lot of time on those two, I asked Nora to please put those back on there, just to remind you that if there are any additional questions, or if you're hearing anything out there, we need to know soon, because they will be on the agenda for final adoption in March.
Does anybody else want?
I do. I have gotten feedback on the first grade readiness.
Okay.
Which is, so...
I know there were two negative votes, so go ahead.
No, it was, there was just...
I think when we first, there were, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There were just a suggestion, like with, um, 2A, where it says, "Provide first grade readiness demonstrated by successful completion of kindergarten and otherwise demonstrating first grade entries. Readiness on an assessment of essential development and physical skills." That is a, it can be very subjective, you know, it's, so, why not, since we do understand essential skills, can we not sort of just say, why not just say, "An assessment which includes the mastery of essential skills?" And that would be what they would have to have done to complete kindergarten, I mean, kindergarten, and to be able to be ready.
While you're over here, so, no, I'm listening.
Okay.
So, I'm, but I want James to listen, because, here's, because if we make, what's considered, if we make substantial changes to it, it has to go through the process again.
Okay.
That's correct.
Correct.
If there's substantial, and there's a little bit of wiggle room about what's substantial. That's why I got James to just, to help us figure out if that's substantial or not. Your suggestion...
I would interpret that as being substantial, to be most conservative.
Not really. It's kind of... We use the, I use the word essential. I use the word skills.
Pardon me, ma'am. Without you giving it to me in writing, I don't know how to consider what your suggestion...
My suggestion is to delete A and say that they will, well, I don't know exactly what it is.
Maybe you can give it to James, and he can kind of look at it and see.
My suggestion is, instead of having the, the, the way it's written in A, which is pretty subjective, you know, where a lot of, what, somebody's successful completion, that's, you know, but we have always said, mastering of essential skills, so why not just say that they will ma, uh, they will master, uh, exhibit mastery of essential skills, and that could be upon completion of kindergarten, or in the assessment of...
So, that, I guess, yeah, it would probably require us to go through another, to, to abandon the current.
I know.
And go back to the process of, of reintroducing it, I think. I, it is, it's, it's a minor change, but I think it's enough, because they, as they have, I mean, James is a very good attorney, but as they've explained it to me before, like, if we're changing, you know...
A D and a A.
A D or a that or something, it's one thing, but if you start really moving around major words, it, that's, that's a new rule, you have to start over.
Dr. Mackey?
Is that kind of right? Basically, yes.
Dr. Mackey, it's already been out for, for discussion. It's up for adoption at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
And the Board will go up or down on the resolution as it is. If it fails, then we will reconsider something else.
Okay. Just wanted to put forth my...
That would be procedurally what, the way I think we'll proceed. If it doesn't pass next time, we'll see what happens.
Okay. Just wanted to get it on the record, so to speak. Okay.
I don't know what that means.
I don't either, but I thought you sounded pretty...
I don't care.
And then item eight is a similar, is out for the 45 days for adoption at the next meeting. And both those things will be up for vote, and it takes five votes to pass it, we'll see what happens. Those are administrative code, that's, it's very legal stuff.
Yes, sir. Can I make just a few announcements?
We're going to.
Uh, quick announcement, so remember, in March, you'll get something, but March the 8th, so on the Wednesday before the board meeting, that afternoon, we will have the Arts Celebration at the Shakespeare Festival. Uh, Mr. Beto, he's, he's working on, it's gonna be a reception, and then the program, and I think the reception is gonna be at 1:00, and the program at 2:00. That is earlier than we did last year, we would like to do it later, but part of the thing is, I think Shakespeare has a play or something that night, and so they're having to, we gotta get out of there for them to turn it around. But he's working...
So, what time?
It's right now scheduled for 1:00 reception, 2:00 program, which I think's about an hour earlier than we did last year, but again, they've got a program, he's, he's working with them to see if we can bump it any later, but right now, that's, that's what we have, and, and, you know, we're trying to work with them. So, that's one announcement. Of course, then we'll have a board meeting the next day. Remember, I, I announced to you at the retreat, and I'll tell you again, February 23rd will be, at 9:00, will be our budget presentation to the legislature, and I will be, it's, it's a budget presentation, you present to all four committees together, so it's a big body. Um, I, you know, they've asked me to present certain, some specific things that are not even about the budget, but I will do that. That, that's typical, um, but we'll have, I'll have about, I think I have an hour with them, but they've asked me to spend 15 minutes on an update on the implementation of the Literacy Act, the Numeracy Act, which those ladies are working on, and the, um, an update on charter, on charter schools, how many we have, and so forth, so...
The meeting was at 9:30?
It's at 9:00. 9:00, it'll be in Room 200 of the State House. Connor and Cole, I haven't introduced you yet, to Cole Wagner, if you haven't met Cole, he's our newest addition, I told you he was coming. Uh, we're from Lieutenant Governor Angworth's office, we're thrilled to have him, and he's been deeply engaged already in the process, but they will make sure you know, there'll be a link, if you wanna watch it live, you're certainly welcome to come in person, too, but it'll be 9:00 in Room 200 of the State House. If you decide you wanna come, then would you please let Nora know, so she can make sure you have a parking spot that day, because as y'all know, days you're not here, somebody else is using your parking spot. Days I'm not here, somebody's using mine, too, so there's parkings at premium. Um, so that'll be February 23rd. The legislature's, we'll have our meeting then on the 8th, that is the second day of the legislative session, just so you know. So, the State of State address will be the, um, the, uh, March 7th, and then March 8th, we will have the Arts Program, and March 9th will be the board meeting, so that'll be kind of before week. Um, you have, in front of you, big thanks over there to Bart Reeves, you have this, this is the AASB snapshots, where they go in and take every school district and do kind of a one-page snapshot on them, um, they do a super job. It is the most up-to-date and accurate information they can get at one time, as we've talked about before, and I talked to Sally this morning, I'm gonna drive in, because people sometimes they'll come up and say, "Well, that's not true anymore." Well, no, it's six months later, some of these things change, but it is a really good resource, and, um, they distribute things widely, but they put a lot into it, it's obviously a big printing cost, so you have one for you, everybody to take home. Um, and then the only other announcement is, the item that we took off the agenda on the library plan that came from us, from a group of librarians last month, so what we've done, that was not ready to go forward, um, we've taken it now, and I've gone through it, and we've had some other folks who've gone through it here, and we've made several suggestions. Um, we have a copy for you to take home, just a physical copy of a new draft, but it's not ready yet for a vote, because we need to take it back to that group of librarians and let them look at it, because they've not seen the changes that we've made in the department. So, what I would say is, take it with you, if you wanna look through it, read it. Um, my plan is to put it on the, to send it to the librarians and get their feedback, and then to have it on the work session for rediscussion in March for a possible vote in April. Uh, it might not, it might take a little more time than that, depending on if the librarians have a lot of comments, or if y'all do, but I think if you wanna take a draft we did today, knowing it's not the final draft, but it is much cleaned up, there were some, I mean, there were spelling errors in the, the first one, it just wasn't ready to go. So, this one is, um, is much cleaned up, but it's not the, probably the final final, but it'll give you something to read over, and then you'll probably get another version before the March work session.
Will we edit it to assembly?
We can at assembly, yes, ma'am. I'll get, Nora, remind me of that. I'm telling you, Nora has become the assembly queen over there, she's just, she understands it better than I.
I love you.
And, um, she can go ahead and load it into assembly and get you that draft in there. So, that'd be great. So, you don't even launch your paper copy, leave it on the table, and we'll load it in assembly. Um, that is all my announcements, Dr. Reynolds, I know it's hard to believe, and, uh...
The copy's looking there. If you look in assembly, one of the things, Ms. Torrington was so gracious in adding, if you're in assembly, you can click on it and get the bios of both of the individuals who presented today. At the next meeting, we will have two representatives from the Senate. We'll have the pro tem of the Senate, who's Republican, and we'll have the minority leader from the Senate, who Dr. Richardson so graciously contacted, and we will spend time with them, as we did today. And for those of you who keep wanting to invite more and more people, have at it. We'll just stay here till, till we bring our cots next time. Also, some of us get invited to be served on various committees. Dr. Richardson and I have been privileged to be invited to serve on the committee, it's now, though, by Allen Harris. I don't know what's, just, what his ration, what his credentialing is, but we're invited to meet about absentees, but we're not gonna be absent, are we?
No. And from the State Department, Dr. Kay Warfield is representing us.
We've got about four, five people on there. And so, that's next week, and I think I'm on the class evaluation committee, that I've got material, so I'm sure all of you are gonna get asked to do various sorts of things, and if you really wanna take my place with Mr. Harris, I'll provide that for you.
No, you have said you'll be there next week.
I said, I said, they really want to take my place.
No, you've already committed.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, you gotta keep him straight.
I, I've skipped one thing, but I'm gonna keep skipping it.
You said you were finished.
Can I say this one thing, Doc? I promise. Um, the, two of our ladies came prepared today, Siobhan Harris and Bonnie Short, to talk a little bit about the update on what we're doing with Higher Ed and the path forward, which Ms. West represents us on, and the Barstow Report. What? I don't know if that's a written thing, I know folks are ready to go, so I don't know if there's something we can send with the board members, maybe, and then ask their questions and discuss it next month?
That's fine, we'll do that.
Is that okay? We can do that, and then we'll, um, yes, Siobhan, is that okay?
It's not time-sensitive, I think.
No, it's not time-sensitive. But we just wanted you to know, that, the work is moving forward, and they have a really good plan about it, and so we wanted you to know that work's moving forward on our work with Higher Ed and Early Literacy, so just know, we're gonna share it with you, written form, because we want you to know what's going on, and then maybe discuss it, answer questions next month.
And, and really, what it is, is just where the colleges responded, that they are at this moment with, with proceeding with the recommendations, so it's just a list of what they're doing right now.
So, what if we load that in assembly, and then send it out, or, what do you wanna do?
That would be good.
I'll have a recommendation from Barstow.
It's just for the colleges' response, feedbacks, then, where are you on responding, on implementing recommendations, and they responded, gave us some great feedback.
So, I'll email it to Nora, then?
I do hope that we can take up the invitation from Representative Daniels and meet with the legislators, because he made that offer, and that might be, it's nice to meet with the superintendents, but those guys are making changes, and I know that some of us would like to see some modifications in the Charter Commission, and a number of other issues, and the legislature is when it's done. And based on my conversation with the legislators, they are receptive... And based on my conversation with the legislators, they are receptive to changes if we suggest them with some substitution. And don't believe anybody else controls it, it's still an open discussion. Any other discussion, any comments? We are adjourned.